Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon FiOS, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Township Conference Meeting Tuesday, May 6th. Ms. LaSina?
I wish to make the following announcement to show compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice of this meeting was given by adopting an annual schedule of the location, time, and date, sending copies to the Scotch Plains Fan with Times, the Star Ledger, and the Courier News, posting in the municipal building, and filing a copy with the Township Clerk within seven days following the annual organizational meeting of this body. If you would please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. LaSina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vasdean?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. The next item on our agenda is a public comment. This portion is devoted to anyone who has anything they'd like to share with this council. Please give your name and address. Thank you.
Frank Festa, Ramapo Way. Congratulations on your new font. I hope we saved a lot of money in ink. Back in April, the tax collector CFO was here and mentioned something about a loan. And I understand that perhaps your attorney was going to clear up that little misconception.
I talked to her about that, and I also spoke with the manager about it, but there really, there was a home loan, I'm sorry, I talked to a clerk about it. There was a home loan and two other types of loans at that time, back in 92 or 93, when the original closing took place. And one of them, the home loan, was actually one that after a certain period of time, it was forgiven, and there was no requirement for repayment. The other one was just a straight loan, and there was no, it was actually just money donated by the township. So there's no repayment of a loan on any books that, so I think that she was mistaken in that, in that statement. There's no loan that has, on any books, that has to be repaid.
So, we squandered more than a million dollars, and we're not going to get it back. We're going to wind up in about eight and a half years with a, with an old building, and we have 28 Mount Laurel units. And I wonder if any of them are housing units, or are they all for seniors only, for 62 and over? Can someone get me that?
The only thing I can respond, Mayor, is that the 28 units actually have benefited the township in that we have received credit under our, either the first round or second round plans from the Council on Affordable Housing. And under COER's regulations, you actually may be able to, once those, once those restrictions expire, normally 20, the old program was 20 years, you can then ask that those units be reconsidered for inclusion. If you encumber them again for another 30 years, you get double credit for them, so to speak. So you may even be able to include them in your third round plan, and the new COER regulations came out just last week. So we may be able to get some benefit from those COER units.
And since Mount Laurel won, it's been 38 years. Are any of those units Section 8?
I don't have, I don't have an answer.
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know. We could find out.
Okay. And if we, if we want to move this building, we want to sell this building, we want to sell the firehouse, it's my opinion that we can very easily take all of this infrastructure and go down to Lake Avenue, and your new municipal building is already built. We can still house the 28 Mount Laurel units on the upper floors. They wouldn't, they would go in and out on an elevator, and we can have a police station, we can have municipal offices, and we can take this very valuable property and hopefully develop it. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Albert Muller, Ramapo Way. Last time when we were here, I asked about paying our taxes and the like via credit card. And I was wondering about an update, and one of the council members mentioned something about their family used a debit card. A debit card is fine, except I don't believe it offers you the same protection should fraud or something creep into it. And I just was wondering that we're not going to head solely in the debit direction, that we do head in the credit card direction, assuming that we are. So I'd like to get an update, if you wouldn't mind.
I think we had that discussion last time. I'll ask Mr. Giles to, you know, review it one more time.
I mean, there hasn't been much in terms of progress on that. Part of what I'm looking at, pardon? Sorry. Part of what I'm looking at is a new computer-based system. It's part of what was approved in the bond ordinance, or will be approved in the second reading of the bond ordinance. But yes, when we do go forward with that, we'll explore all options, you know, credit, debit, check, you know, whatever somebody feels comfortable using. If it's feasible, we'll let them make that decision on their own. But it's unlikely that it'll be solely one source, either way.
Okay. That's what I, one of the things I was concerned, and you're still proceeding with looking into it?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Carolyn Perkins, Westfield Road in Scotch Plains. I have a couple of questions. My main question today is, why was our main phone number not working yesterday? 322-6700. It was dead. Anybody have an answer?
There were technical issues with the computer. It hasn't really been identified what specifically happened, but the techs were here for several hours working on it to get it back up and running. It's the first time since typing here that that's happened.
And how did we notify anybody about this? Did we use our emergency radio station?
No.
That would have been a good idea. I know that there are people who come to me because they know I will speak up. Princeton Avenue, leaf pickup was not done, and the man who has his leaves there is handicapped. So his neighbors put his bags of leaves out there. And when the woman's grandchildren did this work, she was told that they're only having one pickup and they wouldn't be coming by again. And needless to say, she was very upset. I cannot understand when you see public works, trucks going every which way, or they couldn't just stop and pick up the bags. Also, on Princeton Avenue, at the entrance of Princeton Avenue on Hetfield, there's a huge hole. As you go further down Princeton, there is another huge hole, and that's by Highview Court. The woman has complained, she's now spoken to me, and I said I would say something tonight. She said, "Oh, they say that they're fixing things." If anybody really took the time to drive around town just to see what's going on, you will find our roads are still in very much need of attention. There's potholes all over the place. But when someone calls and complains, you would think, someone would say it'll be done within the week, okay? Shady Rest, I mentioned this, I know Mr. Vasdean is aware. You have 14 lights at the Shady Rest Scotch Hills parking lot. I'm not talking about the golf course, I'm not talking about those big lights near the golf course. You have those very colonial-looking lights. Out of the total of 14, six are still out. They're out. They haven't been repaired, they haven't done anything to them. And we always talk about safety factors. It is a safety issue. I know people meet there, I know we rent out the building, I still haven't found out how much, but I have no intentions of renting it. Now, where are we, Jerry, regarding the handrail? I know when I spoke to you a week and a half ago, you were going to talk to Ray Peoreo.
He is in the quote process on that with respect to the lights. Our guys spent significant time trying to fix those, were unable to, so we're getting an electrician to come out and take a look at them.
They are unique light, and my husband and I were wondering if you can even get those kind of bulbs anymore. I don't know.
Yeah, that's definitely an issue as well with some of the other bulbs in town, as far as lights are concerned, also.
And my last request is, could we put more than one light at the entrance to the building? So if that light burns out, do you still have another light burning?
I'll pass that along to the guys in the rent department.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on with, is there someone else coming forward? There you go. Almost nifty in the butt.
Hi, everybody. Joe Mordurulo, 450 Clark Avenue, Scotch Plains, New Jersey, the owners of Darby Road. I spoke to the council and briefly what your appetite, sorry if you can't hear me, about something that I said I would come back in a month's time and kind of discuss a little bit more at length with regard to the utilization of the hedge property that is between our building at 450 and the municipal building. There is an event, who is a soccer fan or fanatic or follows it or not, that's coming up quite soon, starting on June 12th, which is the World Cup, which takes place in Brazil this year. And we've run a few events in town, hopefully everyone's kind of visited them over the course of time. And we were trying to do something as a cultural event with regard to the space, putting up a tent there, sort of an open tent, similar to, I guess you could consider it like a German beer garden or something like that, all around the world. What they do when this event takes place is in their town square, town piazza, all over the place, you know, whether it be Italy, Germany, England, Spain, where have you, South America. They usually congregate to their town center and put big screen TVs up all over the place, big huge projection screens, trying to track the crowds down to the center of town, you know, for promoting the downtown, but also creating sort of a cultural evening or event, so to speak. And we had hopes to see if you guys would, the board would approve or come on board with us, you know, possibly handling it. I know in the past, there's been some issues of whether or not the property was rentable or not rentable, or it could be used by a nonprofit organization. In other words, some discussions with the board on prior occasions, and I'd ask you to kind of consider it over the course of this last month. And I'll kind of break down the project for you guys or the event and how we kind of saw it taking place. I basically approached a bunch of the other restaurants, local restaurants in town, the larger ones first and foremost, to see if they had interest in kind of coming on board with it and possibly, you know, joining forces to create what I consider a real sort of taste of, taste of the month, or taste of the town for the month of, you know, June and the beginning part of July. I spoke to the powers that be over at Tavern, I spoke to the people at the Grillstone, I talked to Alfonso's, and I have meetings set up with a couple others that showed some initial interest, but our schedules just didn't kind of jive out. And they were all on board with coming in and doing the, you know, vending part of things in terms of the tents. So we put the tents up a couple days prior to the event. There's basically 17 dates in the course of that month that I think makes sense, that are the larger matches, bigger matches. Most of the matches, pretty much all of them, run from anywhere from 12 o'clock in the afternoon until about, the last match is 6 o'clock, so it's, nothing goes past 8 o'clock at night in the course of, you know, the game scheduling. The good thing for us here in the United States right now is that the timeline in Brazil is sort of the same time zone that we're in. There's about an hour difference, which is a great thing, instead of it being in Japan, where it's in the middle of the night. So basically, we would get a, what would be considered a catering liquor license to extend our liquor license to the town facility. I've been in touch with the insurance, the guy who does risk management and insurance side of things for Scotch Plains, to talk about what the implications were and what additional policies and premiums we would have to satisfy as a group coming in to kind of take care of this. The business administration, the local business administration, has signed up to be the main sort of provider for the event. We, I'm just acting as the point person on behalf of them. I spoke to Lisa Mon, and we've had conversations about it, and she seems to have their full support, the Business Association, as they're the event provider. We would be one of the operators along with somebody other operators in town. And then basically, what it would be is we would have a bar out there, and the different food providers would also put food out for the people, whether it be when the United States plays, maybe they'd be doing a barbecue with hot dogs and hamburgers, which is, you know, and apple pie, which is, you know, the good old America. When Italy played, Alfonso's would come on and probably do pastas and, you know, things of that nature, maybe pizzas, et cetera, so forth. Grillstone would pick a couple of different cuisines and maybe do Spanish food one night or, you know, French food another night, and they're all dependent on, you know, what they eventually sign up for in terms of the, you know, which matches they want to choose. We're going to have a roundtable meeting, if this meeting goes well, with all of those groups and kind of finalize some of those details. And like I said, it would be 17 days out of that, basically from the 12th of June till the 13th of July. It's sort of a time where everybody's kind of finishing up school, and it's kind of hectic and chaotic and things like that, so it's a big, pretty big risk on, you know, our parts in terms of the marketing, the advertising, the funding for the project, not really knowing who's actually going to come or show up for it, as kind of, you know, throwing an arrow at the sky and hoping it sticks or something.
Mayor, because we have such an interesting agenda, I think that the answer to your question in my mind is that this would require a special use permit, under a special use permit provisions from the association. And so that may be a good way to start the process, is to complete that, and it would ultimately come to the governing body for approval. But, Joe, I just thought that that would be the best way to start the process. That, if that...
Listen, and I thank you for jumping in there, because I completely agree. I mean, you've got to have a business plan, okay? And if it's going through the Scotch Plains Downtown Professional Business Association, they should be out in front of this. The last time you came here, Joe, there was no reference to a World Cup, okay? I mean, you know, soccer fan myself, it's wonderful that has that, but there's a lot of questions here. Who owns the tent? Who's paying for it? Who's getting the liquor sales out of this? You know, are you really having a consortium, which was your original proposal, which was to have a food tasting, not aligned to a World Cup, not necessarily alcohol being served? I mean, it was just an event for downtown, for our local businesses to share and to preview their food, okay? So this is really going in a different direction, maybe a very good one, but I agree with the counselor. I think we've got to take a step back and refocus based upon what Mr. Laris suggested.
Well, the idea that I presented was a cultural event.
Okay, but it, I, I'm not adverse, I'm not adverse to it, but we, you know, we need a business plan.
I think it sounds great.
Well, we all think it sounds great. We thought it sounded great the last time, so...
Getting people to downtown, foot traffic.
Can I just ask two questions while you're here?
Sure, absolutely.
The question that comes to mind because of the time of the year is the farmer's market. So is there a specific day of the week that you would be target? I mean, I know there's a timeframe of dates, but are there specific days, Joe?
I did actually make up a few calendars here, just for you guys to be able to view the dates, so you could kind of take a look at their...
I guess, I guess maybe what I'm trying to get at is, as you prepare the special use permit, the application...
To take that into consideration.
To take it into consideration, because obviously this particular lot has been allocated for that, and it's good to have some consistency there, this may people know what to expect.
That was part of the conversation I had had with Lisa already when we first, you know, kind of brought the subject up and had conversations about it, so definitely in consideration.
Okay. And is it this particular space that you're married to, or is the village green, as they call it?
I just don't think with the trees and all the encumbrances that are there, it would make sense. And obviously, weather permitting, to try and bring people out, the tent is, you know, kind of one of the benefits of it, just in case we did get some inclement weather, that we have the ability to kind of house the people in there. There is not necessarily going to work the same way on the green side of things, but, you know...
So are these weekend events, just so I understand where you're at moving forward?
There's some mid-days, there are some weekends, there's probably, if I was to look at it really quickly, there's four, I think there's four Saturdays and three Sundays altogether, and then 10 mid-week, 10 mid-week days.
Well, I'm interested in seeing the application. Sounds like a very exciting adventure.
I will get it to you as quick as possible. It's the first news I've had of doing an application, so it's no problem. I can get it to you this week, and then, you know, it just depends on when I could come back and see, to talk to you guys about this again, because obviously there's...
Because of the timeline.
...timeframes and all that stuff. So I'll try to get it, you know, to, you know, in the house, so we can act on it properly. I think we all think it's a good idea, but, you know, to the councilwoman's point, I mean, we have the most successful farmer's market probably in the area. And there's no parking on Saturdays to begin with. We buy from there as well.
Well, I, listen, I'm happy you do.
Which is convenient for us, for sure.
Okay. Maybe you could consider the other side of the building as, Councilwoman Gilanella says...
If the logistics worked out, I'd have no problem whatsoever putting it there.
So let's move it up court. Let's keep the dialogue going. It sounds like a nice plan.
Just the one last thing I'd like to mention, is one of the other organizations that we did get sort of support from for the, for the event, as well as having them involved with fundraising efforts and stuff like that, was resolved. There's a couple of members here tonight that, part of the proceeds, as well as fundraising efforts inside the event, would also go to help benefit those folks there and all the good work that they do. They're worthy of it.
Even better, because if people are over there, they'd be able to see the poor condition of that building.
Absolutely.
All right. So I will get the application to you guys expeditiously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming up. Is anyone else coming forward? If not, can I get a motion on the bill list, please? Pretty small font.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval. Bill list, the amount of $835,189 and 1 cent.
Would someone second that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions that anyone might have? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Ms. LaSina to call the roll on the bill list. Ms. LaSina?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vasdean?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. May I get a motion on Resolution 2014-081?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move for approval. Resolution 2014-081, authorizing acceptance of the memorandum of understanding with the Scotch Plains Public Works/Recreation Association for contract years 2014 through 2016.
Thank you. Will someone please second that?
I'll second.
Thank you. And Mr. Giles, can we have some discussion on this before we ask the council?
Sure. This is consistent with our discussion. We had an executive session last week with respect to the contract negotiations between Scotch Plains Public Works and Recreation Association and Management Office. Memorandum of Understanding outlines the major points of agreement between the parties, myself and the members of the union. Their contract ended this past January. We've had several meetings to discuss, you know, where we were looking to be. I would like to publicly offer them a thank you. There was a good discussion, it was a quality discussion, you know, it took about four or five different meetings, but there was never really any animosity, as you might expect sometimes in these type of negotiations. So, you know, you'll be seeing, you know, if you have any questions on this, I think we answered most of them. I talked to a few of you in the past day or so, but ultimately, it discusses their salary increases at 2, 1 and 1/2, 1.75 over the next three years, you know, that was taken into consideration, the 2% levy cap, and a host of other points of negotiation. So with that, if you have any other questions on it, be happy to address them.
The raise for 2014 clearly is retroactive to January 1st, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll get that back pay?
Yes. We're already, pretty much have that ready to go once it's approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel, any discussion here? Hearing none. Ms. LaSina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vasdean?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Next item up on our agenda, our manager discussion items, Mr. Giles, I'll let you leave.
Sure. Tonight, we have a representative from Comcast, New Jersey here to discuss the cable television franchise. I'm a representative from Jeff's office, myself, Bob, our station manager, have met with them, you know, talked to them, and now the attorney, Mr. Cruz, has been in constant contact with them over the past several days. This public hearing satisfies the requirements of what's needed to come before you. You know, we still haven't ironed out a, you know, an agreement in terms of an ordinance yet. That's going to come at one, probably your next meeting, hopefully, if not the meeting thereafter. But, you know, Jeff can talk about what's required of this. Your assent to this hearing is basically not necessarily the ordinance, it's just that they're providing the, you're satisfied they can provide the technical and the legal services necessary. Jeff, would you want to jump on that?
I will provide, before the public hearing, I will provide an introduction about your role and the public's role, and what this is all about, and what will come eventually. So when we get to that point in the hearing, I don't know if we're, are we at that point yet, because if we are, then, okay. Let me just give you a little bit of an introduction. Normally, the municipality goes through what's called an ascertainment phase, an ascertainment period. That time, unfortunately, before my time, last year came and went, but that really is not, is not really fatal. You still have the opportunity, and we have negotiated with Comcast. We actually sat down with them, with Albert Cruz from my office, the manager, Bob from the cable television station, and identified certain needs, identified certain equipment needs, et cetera. We went through the existing ordinance, talked about potential changes. This is the hearing process to give the public an opportunity to talk about their issues, members of the governing body to talk about their concerns, if any, but understand that the standard is somewhat rigorous. It's really not talking about programming, you can't really talk about rates, that's really not within your jurisdiction. Rates are an issue for the VPU, and programming is purely internal for the cable station. The issue really is whether any member of the public finds or has concerns about the financial, technical, legal, or physical ability of the provider to provide the service to the township. I can tell you that we did receive the complaints that have been made over the past three years by citizens of the township, and most of those are related to outage issues, charges. There is no formal discussion in that paper that Comcast provided that identifies the ultimate resolution, but 95% of those were related to charges and outages. Ultimately, ultimately Comcast will be looking for an ordinance, they will present that ordinance, what they can live with, what they won't live with, what they, it's a negotiation back and forth. They'll probably be coming in with 15 years, and the longer, I can assure you that the longer the duration, the more they're going to pay, the more they're going to be willing to pay. And so we've identified internally what some of the technical needs of the community of the township are, a list of equipment needs, which dollar amount I can share with the governing body at some point, but it totals, probably totals a little over $130,000 in equipment needs. They haven't responded to that yet. We will get to that, that detail, there will be an ordinance presented at some point, but we're not, we're not there yet. So this is really a requirement by law that we have a hearing to allow the members of the governing body and members of the public to address their concerns about more of the financial, technical, and physical ability of Comcast to provide service to the township. It's not an opportunity to talk about the fact that there's not enough, you know, Asian stations on, or Latin American stations, or et cetera. This is not what this is about, or that you pay too high a rate on your Comcast bill, but it's more... but it's more to talk about your service and whether you're having problems with that service, and, um, and whether we can, um, one of the other things is that we are currently provided with, uh, peg channels, uh, two of them are in, in existence right now, um, and, uh, we have the ability to, we have actually a third one, uh, which we don't use, uh, so those are the kinds of things that we'll ultimately get, get into in an ordinance, but this is more for the public's benefit.
Can I answer a question?
Sure.
As part of that negotiations and talking about the township's needs, and, and I may be off here, would it not have been appropriate to bring the school board into that conversation so that we could discuss maybe the ability to broadcast some of the things that are being produced in the high school?
Um, I'm not sure whether, I know that they do have one of the channels, correct?
They do.
Um, I don't know whether they've, I indicated to you that they have any concerns, um-
They, they have the, they have the channels, they have the channel to use, and they have the ability to broadcast basically whatever they want.
So I guess my question is, do they have equipment needs? We've identified a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in equipment needs as we negotiate, that is still part of our township. Does the school district have equipment needs that should be addressed in negotiations?
Well, remember, it's actually our, it's our needs, it's the township's, um, it's, it's our refranchise, not, not Board of Education's refranchise.
I understand, that's why I'm asking you as our attorney, is there anything that prohibits us from lending equipment that we determine that we need to?
No, you could, you could certainly do that. There would have to be some type of an, an inter-local agreement with the Board of Education to do that.
Well-
Look, can I follow up? I think it's a very good question she asked, which is that in asking, should we be in consultation with the Board of Ed, uh, to see if they even know the agreement licenses with us? Do they have any specific equipment needs?
Sure, sure.
You know, I mean, I, I thought, I think where Colleen, uh, Jolene Ella, the councilwoman Jolene Ella was going, was that, yeah, we have a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars needs, maybe they have some upgrades that might be entertained or considered, uh, it's just a phone call away.
Right.
I understand they have a very, um, capable, you know, AV group over there.
Right. That's a good point, where, where, as I said, the ordinance hasn't been provided, and it's not over yet, but, and the negotiation isn't over. I want, I don't want to get into-
No, no, we don't want to, but I think the suggestion is maybe, Mr. James, you can reach out to, uh, superintendent over there and find the appropriate people to have that dialogue, because you're right, we're not negotiating, but-
Yeah.
I think you want to bring all parties to the table.
I mean, I'm, I'm struggling a bit with why this wasn't part of the shared service committee. I'm, I'm not, and it could be that I don't, I, I may be missing something.
Well, normally, um, councilwoman, the, the, the negotiation, the refranchise is one that is a township refranchise, because they're requesting the township-
Right.
-to grant an ex, a, a franchise extension. It, it's not, the Board of Education derives a benefit because they're entitled to one of the, one of the local access stations, um, and that was part of the negotiation last time. They haven't, as far as I know, identified any concerns or problems with that station, so we're not, we, we haven't reached out to them because they haven't identified to us whether there are any concerns.
I hear you, but I don't know that they know that we're going through this process.
Well, there was public notice, I can tell you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think it just doesn't hurt. I mean, let's not belabor it, why don't we just make the phone call and see what we can come up with?
Okay.
Counselor, can I follow up with the question?
Sure.
And I'm sorry, councilman, um, and again, as, as you prefaced your question, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, uh, you know, in terms of public input, you know, one of the questions that comes up, that I just heard it today ironically, that folks will get a bill, you know, from Comcast, and, um, you know, the bill is high, and from, from their vantage point, maybe they shouldn't have all those services, but there are instances where the, there is a new pricing structure for the same package that those folks have, which might have re, you know, had they, had they made a call, they would have found their bill could have been reduced by forty dollars, but unless you make the call, you continue to pay what was an old rate. Now, again, I don't know if that's apropos to this discussion-
It's really, yeah, it's, it's really-
But I mean, it's, it's, I just mentioned it because, you know, I hear about public input, and that's, I've heard that as a public comment often.
Let me just say this about rates and programming there, and, and content, that they're not regulated, um, they're done on a regional, not regulated by us. It's, they're regulated by the VPU, they're regulated by, the, the, the content is regulated by the carrier. And understand that it's not just done on a municipal basis, it's done on a regional basis by, by Comcast. We're in what's called the union system, uh, which is actually, um, about forty communities, and some of them are actually in Essex County, it sounds strange, but Bloomfield, et cetera, so that, that region, it constitutes the union system, and they determine based upon demographics, et cetera, the programming content.
No, I'm not talking programming, I'm just saying.
And so, that's really off limits for this discussion.
So we can't weigh in on the, uh, time on a cable, uh, potential virtue, Molly?
Right. And, and, you know, understand that, that they pay a two percent by, uh, franchise fee, um, Comcast is elected not to do the statewide, um, franchise, unless Verizon has done, um, and they've, Comcast is elected to proceed with that on a municipal franchise basis, um, and they have the right to do that as well. And they've, they've come to you for a refranchise, and, and they will ultimately present us with an ordinance that we'll, we can, we'll, we'll negotiate, and ultimately will be presented for, for a public hearing.
So action steps, but over what period of time can you kind of frame, can we frame that?
I would say within the next, uh, month or two, we should be presenting you with an ordinance. There will be a public hearing on that ordinance.
Good. So I have a question, if either one of you can answer this. Does Fanwood go through the same process?
Yes.
Okay. And our shared services committee is comprised of Fanwood, Scotch Plains, and the Board of Ed? So maybe, did Fanwood already go through this process? Have they alerted the Board of Ed that this was taking place?
No, I don't know if they were, they're, they're on this process, I'm not sure where they are in time line.
I, um, I'm, I'm probably on the same cycle as you, but did, uh-
I think they're six months behind us.
I think they're a little behind, I think they are a little behind you, um, the last go-round, Fanwood, Mountainside, Westfield, and Scotch Plains are all kind of very close together, because that's where we made a lot of changes on the access channels, we made various commitments, and required coordination of all of the same jobs. I think that, I think it's correct that they are a little behind you.
Right. Remember that, the last ordinance you adopted was nineteen ninety-nine. It was a fifteen-year, uh, franchise renewal. Likely, they'll be looking for the same thing.
Okay, so, uh, to be continued.
Well, actually, you have a, open it up for a public hearing.
Well, uh, let's, let's begin the process.
Unless she wants to make, the, the representative from Comcast wants to make a presentation to start, and then you can open it up. Maybe you probably want to introduce yourself.
Right, yes, I was, I was going to say, I, I skipped the introduction part. Um, I'm Molly Adams, I'm, uh, Government Affairs, Government and Regulatory Affairs Manager for Northern New Jersey, um, and I am here to enter into the record a very brief statement, and as you've already started, and hear what the governing body says, and we'll all hear what you folks want to say. Um, as your attorney indicated, we are coming to the end of a three-year federally mandated franchise renewal process. This fifteen-year franchise, as he said, um, expires the end of June. We began this process three years ago, back in July, uh, two thousand and eleven, by sending a letter to the township indicating our intentions to renew the franchise. This is a non-exclusive franchise, as I'm sure many of you are aware, um, Verizon is also serving this municipality, that, so this isn't, we don't have the lock on it. Um, as your attorney indicated, after we submitted this letter, uh, there is an optional ascertainment, uh, period where you can review our performance, assess community needs, and issue a report. That time has passed, as he indicated, um, but I do want to stress that this is optional. In New Jersey, I would say of the one, of the municipalities we deal with, far less than half do go through this formal processes. Um, uh, this is following the state's timeline, we filed in our application, and that's what to renew the franchise back in September, and that, um, application has been available in your township clerk's office for you to take a look at. Um, tonight's hearing is on that application, no action is required. As I said, this is just an opportunity for everybody to hear what everybody wants to say. Um, as, as the attorney indicated, and I'll simply reiterate them, he did a terrific job, he knows, he knows the law, uh, the, um, first, you could, there are four, shall we say, tests that you must, um, base your renewal decision on. Number one, has the cable operator substantially complied with the material terms of the existing franchise and applicable law? You will find that Comcast has either met, all, has met all current ordinance requirements, and is in, in compliance with the applicable statutes and regulations. In New Jersey, the Board of Public Utilities is very heavily involved in cable franchises. This is a, kind of a unique New Jersey thing, it's, it's different than in a lot of other states, as a lot of things in New Jersey are different from other states. So the Board of Public Utilities has a very active role in, 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 uh, in the oversight of cable television operators. Uh, the second test is, has the quality of the operator's service, including signal quality, response to consumer complaints, and billing practices been reasonable in the light of community needs? We feel our service is definitely better than reasonable in the world of cable television. Our technologically sophisticated plant monitors, uh, the system twenty-four hours a day, we have, uh, staff on-call twenty-four, seven, and, uh, we do same-day service calls with a two-hour, with a two-hour appointment window for our customers, and we're committed to making things better. One has, always has room for improvement. The third test is, does the operator have the financial, legal, and technical ability to provide the facilities and, and equipment that it's proposing to provide? Comcast is New Jersey's biggest cable operator, and now currently the biggest cable operator in the United States. We're strong financially, and we have one of the best management teams in the entire cable industry. The fourth test is, um, is our propo, franchise renewal proposal, uh, reasonable to remeet, need, the, huh, to meet the future cable-related needs of the community, taking into account, of course, the cost of meeting those needs and interests. Our cable television system serving the township is, consists of fiber optic and coaxial cable, the fiber goes deep into your neighborhoods. Um, we routinely provide our customers with new programming services, including thousands of on-demand choices, streaming to multiple devices, along with new technologies like our X-One box, mobile app, as well as things like high-speed internet service, Comcast digital voice, and Comcast home security. These last are, of course, non-cable television products. As your attorney indicated, two areas you cannot, um, make the decision on are rates, the rates we charge customers for our products, and programming. That said, there's nothing to stop anybody from voicing their opinion on this. And that basically concludes my remarks. If there is anybody in the governing body that has questions for me, I'll do my best to answer them.
That's well, thank you for that. Very thorough overview, and similarly, uh, to Mr. Lehrer, uh, I guess I have a question, Mr. Lehrer, you know, recognizing that we can open this franchise renewal hearing to the public. I'm not sure how many from the public were, uh, prepared to speak on this matter, so will this be the only hearing, or will this continue?
Understand that, um, this was intended to be, because it was, it was noticed as your, as your hearing, uh, we did, Bonnie did publicly notice for it.
I understand.
So it is your, it is the initial, the hearing on, for lack of a better term, people venting their concerns, um, there will be another public hearing on the ordinance, so, so I don't want to give the impression that it, it's over, because there will be another public hearing on the ordinance itself, which will identify the salient terms, um, that you, you're comfortable with and you're ready to present as an ordinance, so the public will be given an opportunity to talk about that at a public hearing. Um, you don't have to conclude the hearing tonight, but there is a representative of Comcast here, you know, I, and a nice-
I, I think recognizing what you just shared with the council and with this audience, um, I think for there to be really thoughtful comment, you know, seeing an ordinance with specific language would be very helpful, and we'll have an opportunity to get that out to the public well in advance, and we would hope there would be some feedback. So I would, I would, uh, incur that if, you know, this, this could be our opening ball to be subsequently followed up with the ordinance for the council, the governing body, to review, to comment on, and for more specific information for the public to weigh in on.
I, I agree, and, and I, I would, uh, procedurally, you would have to close this public hearing.
Yep.
Um, but then again, it's not, you're not taking a vote on anything.
I understand.
You're merely closing this oper, this initial step, and then there will be an, an ultimate ordinance, where there will be a public hearing.
Are my colleagues in agreement with that?
So we just need to make a motion to close the public hearing?
You know, we, we need to make a motion to-
You have to open it.
-open the public hearing, councilman. So I'd like a motion to open the, uh, public hearing, uh, for the renewal of the Comcast franchise agreement with the municipality of, uh, Scotch Plains, Township of Scotch Plains. Is there a second? Second. Okay, um, Lehrer?
Anybody can come up and speak, and, and it would be limited to the, to the issues that we talked about, um, you certainly have the right to, to vent your, your concerns and complaints about programming, but there-
Yeah. Is there anyone on the council that would like to, uh, weigh in and share some thoughts, uh, councilman?
Yes. Mayor, I just had a, a question. Jeff, you indicated, uh, about the subject of equipment needs, approximately a hundred and thirty thousand, I was just wondering about that, if, if anyone could elaborate just a little bit about what we're talking about.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Um, we've provided, um, through, through Bob, um, our cable operator, a list of, um, the types of equipment, and, um, Comcast is currently considering that, and, um, they haven't provided their response yet, and, uh, ultimately, when we finalize negotiations, we will get back to you and let you know, but it's, uh, cameras for the studio, um, tripods, uh, a production switcher, some field cameras, there's, um, miscellaneous, you know, microphones, et cetera, um, and I can certainly provide that list to, to the members of the governing body, uh, but we have spent some time talking about our cable-related needs and provided Comcast with that list.
And I think before, I think, I think you solved the riddle before, when you talked about, uh, we have a regional-
Yes.
-broadcast area-
Yes.
-that covers, I guess, part of Union and Essex County?
You'd be, it's actually, um, the system, the union system is called Area One, includes Belleville, Montclair-
Mm-hmm.
Glen Ridge-
Livingston?
Uh, yes, Livingston.
I have a reason for asking that.
Yeah.
Because it was brought to my attention by, uh, a relative of mine who happens to live in Livingston, and for some reason saw the Scotch Plains Town Council broadcast in Livingston, which I thought was interesting, so-
Woodbridge as well is in, is in that list.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If I may say, there's forty, there's forty-two towns served by, it's what we call the ca, the cable system Comcast, which is making the application to renew the franchise, called Comcast of New Jersey, Roman numeral two. Um, it's the bulk of Union County, the bulk of the Essex County suburbs, like, not Newark, not Elizabeth, it's basically the suburb, suburbs around there, a couple towns in Hudson County, and a couple towns in, um-
Middlesex.
Middlesex County. It's really a, it's a function of when cable first came to the area, it was, because there were many little cable companies in those days, and so there, there were a whole lot of them now, this, over the past thirty years, this has gotten much more consolidated. Um, but one of the questions that you sort of touched on here, generally Comcast, what's different from, in Comcast, from area to area, from cables, what we call system, from cable system to cable system, there is some difference in the program, it's mostly the ethnic foreign language programming, um, areas that have a lot of, um, have, but pretty much, everybody sees the ESPNs, everybody sees the Bravos, everybody sees the HBOs, and pretty, and within a few cents, we basically have at least a regional pricing structure. In other words, the, this is, the, you pay the same price in Livingston for this stuff as you pay in, uh, Cherry Hill, or as you pay in Jersey City. There's not, the, our pricing, um, partly to simplify things for our customer service folks, and for- for, and just for our customers, that, because everything's done by a national contract, we have national contracts with these programmers, so pretty much the company is going toward same price everywhere. Doesn't matter, doesn't really matter where you live, but that's, that's the movement that's going on. There's still a few pennies down at the lowest level, our limited basic level of cable service, which in this area is about 26 channels. Now, there, there's actually more channels on that level of service than there are in some of the areas Comcast does, but actually, it's more than 26 now that we have digital. But it's, it's roughly, it's, that, that lowest level of service, it's primarily broadcasters and the community access or PEG channels. There may be a little difference down there, but in the end, it's all pretty much the same pricing.
Is there anyone else who would like to address, question?
Frank Fester, run with the way. The number of $137,000, is that going to be municipal funds? Or is Comcast going to put that money out?
Well, it's actually Comcast. That's the negotiation. I'm not going to say that they're gonna-
No, that's fine. I understand negotiations. That's fine. It's not municipal funds. But who is actually going to own the equipment?
The township.
They are going to then give it to the township.
It's just, they would, they would actually provide the funds, and then we would buy the, the equipment.
We would buy the equipment that they suggest.
No, no, no. We tell them what we need and what the aggregate dollar value of that is, and they then, they can, through the negotiation, it could be either a lump sum payment, or over time, or whatever.
But as I remember being in one meeting, we lost all the equipment that was downstairs because we changed cable guys, and obviously-
No, no, that's not, that's not. There was a lot of equipment that was- Loaned to us from individuals, and a lot of that equipment was, quite frankly, obsolete and not functioning. So, we, we, we really didn't lose equipment per se.
Just understand-
We had a lot of things that weren't working.
We've provided, Mayor, our wish list-
Yes, of course.
And we're not telling you that, that that's the end of the negotiation.
No, 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 no.
And I don't really want to tip my hand, because-
That's fine.
Yeah.
We're not negotiating tonight, Mr. Fester. But he, but I think you have, you, this has been clarified for you now, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Bill McClintock, 1583 East Second Street. I'm probably the only person in the room that was here when we negotiated the 1999 contract, and I was on the council, and this is the exact same procedure that we went through. We got a certain number of funds to buy equipment at that point. I remember the number. It was a little bit smaller than this number, but of course, we've got a lot of years and a little bit of inflation since then. But this is very typical of the type of thing that we went through. And we got a lot of good equipment out of it then. It probably is all obsolete by now. But it's just very much the same system that we went through at that time. I don't even remember, Jeff could have even been involved at that point, and probably Mrs. Pavinski, maybe, or somebody. Just one other comment about Comcast. I've been a Comcast subscriber since it's been here. I'm a very happy Comcast subscriber, so I'll put that on the record. I've been glad that Verizon came along with their system, because it's caused Comcast to up their speed and keep up, up to or even higher level than the FiO system, and I've, I've been happy with all that progress as well. Thank you for your comments.
Sure. Is there anybody else coming forward? Please?
Ms. Adams, earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that you guys provide fiber, and that you provide that to a good chunk of our community. Could you expound on that, in terms of how far into our community, like what percent of houses that's available at, and speak to it going forward, in terms of how much more fiber will be available throughout Scotch Plains in the coming years?
The way it works, and it's been quite some years now, actually, I think it was the previous upgrade back around when we renewed that last franchise, we run fiber, and have done it, to what we call fiber, fiber optic transmitter nodes in each neighborhood. Roughly, I believe it's about every 400, 400 homes, the fiber, there's one node serving like 400 homes. Out of that fiber node comes coaxial line, which is what goes to the house. Because ultimately, your home wiring, your computer, that's what really impacts your speed. We've been very satisfied. We find this, this is the way to go. We have no plans to run fiber to the home. But this is, you'll see the, you can see the, you'll see a box up on the pole, and that's, that'll be a fiber node, and that, that's, so it terminates, it's called a hub and, a hub and hub network, and it goes, it goes out, so there are multiple. So, it's roughly 400 times your house, your number of households divided by 400.
Understood, thank you. I realize that's not a point that's germane to the negotiation, but I know it's something a lot of people are curious about, so I appreciate that.
And, and one of the interesting things now, I mentioned our monitoring, is that we have a big monitoring center down in, down in, down in Moorestown, and our, our internet customers, the modems, are constantly talking to the system, and when only a couple of those go offline, it sends alarm bells down in that, in that, into the, into the monitoring center, and the monitoring center then just sends it up here so that our technicians, our line technicians will come out, you know, in the middle of the night, when people don't even know that anything's wrong, to fix the problems. And that's one, one of the great things that's happened since your last franchise renewal, is that, is that we are, have a much better ability to keep track of what is, what is ha, what is happening with the system, with the health of the system, and that kind of thing is only going to get better.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, again. Are there any further questions? And seeing no one coming forward, then I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing this evening. May I have a motion on that?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can you all to vote, I presume, on it?
We can do all in favor on this.
I was going to say, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Ms. Adams. It was a very thorough presentation, and Mr. Lehrer, thank you.
And we'll proceed with the negotiations.
I think that was excellent. Very good discussion, and I expect to hear more from the public, but hope when we have an ordinance in hand. Mr. Giles, you're up again. Village Park Condominium Association.
This resolution is similar to the issue you dealt with with Riga Estates a few months back, or later last year. From 2007 on, for a reason I really can't answer, that predates me, the condo association combination of either not requesting, and also not receiving their reimbursement that they're entitled to, as per the municipal reimbursement law, the Kelly bill. This is a settlement of claims in the amount of $6,454.46. The amounts have been calculated by the engineering department going back to 2007, up until 2012. I sent this information over to Village Park. They're in agreement with the numbers. We based them off the numbers we had on the time, and it requires your approval.
So, we will be moving this at our next meeting?
It's actually on as a resolution now.
Well, I'm just asking. It wasn't clear to me, it was on a management discussion. So, we want to move it? So, then I, we're in agreement on moving it?
I'm sorry, I think I'm, I misspoke, I'm sorry. Bonnie, is that not on as a resolution now?
No.
I didn't still some-
Okay.
So, we'll have it on for our next meeting?
That's fine, yes.
Can I ask a question? Is there no ability to put a limit on how many years we can go back on something like this?
I think the answer is no.
The Kelly bill actually goes back, gosh, it's gotta be at least almost 20 years now. So, technically, it started a long time ago, and it started at 20%, 40%, 60%, 80%, and then 100%. We're way beyond the 100% when, from the time that they're looking for reimbursement. We just, this is really catch-up. We just never did an agreement for the years that they're looking for, and they're technically entitled to reimbursement, full reimbursement.
So, the answer is no?
No.
And moving forward, there's nothing we can introduce as a township ordinance that says you can't show up 10 years later and ask for money?
It's state statute.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the answer.
Yep.
Okay, so that will be as a resolution for our following meeting. Yes. I think that takes care of it for you, Mr. Giles, right now, right? But I, but I think you may be commenting on the next item, which is on the council discussion items, has to do with the proposed ordinance for in-ground pools revised?
Sure. Mr. Lacosta was here a few meetings ago, talking about the proposal for the in-ground pools. He clarified that in the form of a sample ordinance and a memorandum to the mayor and council dated April 1st, 2014. He put in some samples of what it would cost based on an amount, and he also, you know, in the third attachment you're going to see, he kind of summarized it in a very simple manner. I know a couple of you have spoken to him in the last couple of days, you know, for some clarification on this, on ultimately, it's really just your discussion now as to whether or not you want to move forward with proceeding, you know, with the increase. What he did say in his memorandum, if you had the opportunity to read it, one of the questions was, has he gone and talked to some of his neighbor and colleagues? And he addresses that in his memorandum, and he says he has, and, you know, what's he, what he's found, in his opinion, is that other towns are, you know, in his mind, behind the eight ball, and they have relatively low fees as well. I think, you know, this would make us one on the higher end, but he feels that it's consistent with, which require from his office to review some of these more extensive pools that are going in, you know, as opposed to some of the, your traditional in-ground pool. I mean, kind of, we did that last time. So, he had, had the, has had the opportunity to do that.
Is there any discussion from council?
I have something.
Please.
Jerry, I spoke with Mr. Lacosta today, and just to clarify, just, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, because I think in the material that we got, in fact, I'm looking at this, the proposed ordinance, it says here, above-ground pools. It says, delete the building fee of 150 and replace it with building fee of 750. If I understand Bob correctly, it remains 150 for above-ground. Am I correct with that, as far as you know? That was my understanding when I spoke to him today.
The way the sample ord, the way the sample ordinance is written is, it deletes the $150 fee, replaces it with $750. That'd be the minimum, and then 35 per thousand after that.
Now, you're referring to above-ground pools?
That would be above-ground, yes.
Right.
Same thing for in-ground.
Yeah. Well, maybe we need to clarify that, because I, I thought that he said that it remains 150 for the above-ground, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, we should clarify that.
I mean, okay, I can clarify. I was reading the legislation text on the first, your first attachment, and that's what it does say-
Go to the third one.
-in the legislation text. In the third one, I apologize for that, mayor and council. He did modify that to keep the above-ground one the same, and the in-ground one was the one that was changed.
Does that clarify it?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like he was saying, yeah.
I was reading the old ordinance. So, in-ground building, $750 minimum shall be calculated at a rate of $35 per $1,000 to cost construction, 200 for electrical bonding and grid 50, plumbing 75. CL 100.
So, assuming there are no objections to this, we will have this for discussion for passage at our next meeting.
Introduction.
The introduction of the ordinance.
What do you mean?
If the council, oh.
I mean, how do we know there's no objection?
Well, I'm, I'm asking right now.
I don't, I don't support these changes.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what we were asking. That's what I was asking, Councilman. So, then, we will still, unless there is a majority that are opposed to this, we will have this on our calendar for introduction, and we'll vote accordingly.
Can I, can I make another comment?
Unless, unless there are folks that are, you know, have some strong opinions, not to proceed here, that's all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add some thoughts on this. I mean, I think that, looking back to this past year's budget, we already know, just recently, we collected significantly more in construction fees than we anticipated this past year. Along with that, I haven't heard that we're, you know, losing money in that department. I understand the construction officials' point that there are particular pools where the, you know, the amount of work in them is particularly high relative to others. I'd be open to making a change if it was the kind of thing that was revenue-neutral for the taxpayer, but it's pretty clear from the exhibits we have here that we're talking about flooring the fee where it currently stands today, and then increasing it dramatically on a lot of other cases. I just don't think we need any more substantial fee increases. I think our construction fees in Scotch Plains are pretty high as they are, so as this currently stands, I'm not going to support it.
I mean, I would, I would just simply say that I understand what's been suggested by the construction office. I wonder if there should be any, if there is going to be consideration to raise it, maybe some sort of lower fee, or gradual phasing would be more appropriate than what's being suggested. So, I'll just, you know, I'll throw that out there.
It seems like there's, there's some concern here, and maybe what we could do is, we'll table this temporarily, and I think we should have a subsequent discussion, you know. Obviously, you know, our building code official made an appeal to us, gave reasons why he felt this was necessary. Certainly appreciate all the commentary that occurred, but, you know, we're not here to just force a matter. We should, we should entertain more discussion, Mr. Giles, on this matter. Mr. Lehrer?
But just, and a point of clarification, I think from our last meeting, when they assess their property taxes, this counts as an improvement to the land, correct? And therefore, their property taxes go up in perpetuity on that property, correct?
It's typical with the-
So, as a result of, I'm sorry, excuse me, as a result of them building a pool, they're going to pay an ongoing fee for that pool in the form of increased property taxes, correct?
Isn't that consistent with any additional construction that takes place? If you add a family room to your home, or if you renovate your kitchen, Mr. Giles, I don't see where this, there's an inconsistency here. It's a question of whether we want to do it or not.
Yeah, any improvement, that improvement would, and any improvement would increase the property taxes based on the assessment.
And we're currently charging fees for these inspections the same as we charge for home inspections, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we'll have a follow-up meeting with the construction manager, Mr. Giles?
Sure.
All right, I think that's fair. All right. So, we will not have this as an item, an ordinance for our following, our follow-up meeting. The next item is township app development. Just a quick background here, you know, I serve on the technology committee along with our liaison, Mr. Lou Ellen Jones. We both were approached, the committee was approached by a firm that discussed the possibility of building an app for us. Now, I think everyone's pretty familiar with apps are on their smartphones today, recognizing that I think almost 60% of all phones that are sold today are smartphones, and most people are reliant on apps, and I think we know the virtues and the benefits of why people look toward apps and don't look at their laptops anymore. But that said, I don't want to get ahead of myself. I, I think it has real value. I think, I don't want to speak for Councilman Lou Ellen Jones, but I think he would agree. With us today, I invited the chairman of our technology committee, Dan Sullivan. Most know him in town as being one of our most valued volunteers on many fronts, and specifically as our chairman of the technology committee. So, if it's agreeable, I would ask him to come forward and just give a little more technical background of where this is going and what is being proposed, Mr. Sullivan, who's with us tonight, Mr. Giles? Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Not to interrupt your presentation, but has this concept been vetted through the manager's office prior to coming to the council?
This, this, just, just for the record, this is a conference meeting, and this, there's no action that is being asked to be taken tonight. This is purely informative, which is what a conference should provide to council and to the general public. So, no one's being asked to come here and give specific, you know, direction, and there is no intention of someone taking a vote on this matter tonight. It's just to share with the citizens of Scotch Plains, with ourselves, some, you know, things that are happening, you know, in the new world, the new age of communication. So, with that, again, I would invite, you know, unless there's a, I would invite Mr. Sullivan, one of our valued citizens, to come forward and just give us an overview. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Sure.
I'm asking you, Mr. Sullivan.
One of our valued, I, I agree with that.
Well, I'm happy you do agree with that.
I think it would have been more appropriate, however, to vet this through the manager's office.
Mr. Quintero, he's coming forward. Can we at least have some stability allowed?
Senator McFestine, I, I would like to address that-
Councilman Vastine, I, I would like to address that concern, though, briefly, if you don't mind. A few months ago, when we were really first having conversations about the budget and some of the capital needs of the township, there was an instance where we had a conversation based on some software that Mr. James was putting forward as a recommendation as a budgetary need moving forward. I'll wait till Councilman Vastine can hear me.
Yes, go ahead, please, continue.
Well, I was addressing Councilman Vastine, so I thought he might want to listen.
There were some interruptions.
So, Councilman Vastine, at the, I don't know the specific meeting date, but one of the conversations that we had about the budget, there came an item where Mr. James was putting forward a recommendation for a software system that would help to serve some of the needs of the public as far as expressing issues where they had concerns coming up throughout the township. And ironically, that Sunday, I had run into someone from the technology committee, not, not yourself, another member of the technology committee, who had told me about the app. And at first, I thought it was the same product, but when I reached out to Mr. James by email, he and I corresponded, and I found out that it wasn't the same product. And if you recall, the conversation that I put forward at the meeting at that point was that, it was a little bit upsetting to me and a little bit disappointing that we have volunteers that spend a lot of time on these committees, and it's difficult when they become excited about a concept, and it seems like the management is not necessarily, the communication isn't there. And this is a conversation that the manager and I had privately, and it was also a conversation that I brought forward at a meeting similar to this. It doesn't sound like, from that point, there has been additional communication. And one of the things that I've repeatedly asked for is some level of protocol. If we are to have these, these ad hoc advisory committees, and people are coming and volunteering their time, I think they should be aware of volunteers. As volunteers, you may be making recommendations, but this is the protocol as far as going to the manager. Our chair people should be trained. This is something I've been talking about for quite a bit of time. I think it avoids a situation where there is confusion as to who may be making these decisions, and quite frankly, not to exaggerate the situation, but it also minimizes potential hurt feelings. I mean, people get really passionate about some of the ideas that they bring forward, and to kind of get a thanks but no thanks is always, has the potential to be frustrating. And I'm not suggesting that that's what's happening here, but it sounds like through the municipal budget or the capital budget, there was a proposal for software that may be similar in some of the services that it provides to this app, but the app is not coming to us from the same company, and there is no ability for the two systems to speak to each other. And that's pretty telling, and kind of speaks to basically much of the problem that we have in this government. You have two really good systems that don't speak to each other. So, I think we need to get a handle on this moving forward, as far as what the role of our committees is going to be, and I think it's something that the council really needs to address as far as protocol moving forward, because we certainly don't want to send a situ, or a message out to our volunteers that their experience or their expertise is, are not going to be appreciated. So, I hope that answers your question.
With that.
Well, and I, and I agree, and since she addressed it towards me, I, I would like to say a few words. I mean, I, I absolutely agree, first and foremost, that Mr. Sullivan has been a valued member of this community on a number of different fronts, and I absolutely agree that the last thing that I want to see happen is have volunteers and citizens of our town wasting their time and getting excited about things that might or might not come to fruition. However, I believe that a lot of these committees and commissions were created to assist the manager and the council in these decision and vetting processes. So, therefore, it's my opinion, whether it's anyone that I know or don't know that's on these committees, to not coordinate with the manager's office, regardless, and I remember the conversation, regardless of how the idea or the app came to them, I think does create the potential to waste their time, because they could spend six months on something, and there never be a conversation, and all of a sudden, it comes to a meeting like this, and we say, yeah, we're not interested, thank you. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that I don't want to waste their time.
Oh, I don't.
And by doing this, in my opinion, having not gone through a coordination process, we are wasting their time, and we're wasting our time.
Please continue giving us an overview, because I think, you know, you can see the politics of it.
There's no politics, Mayor.
Please, please.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
There is no politics.
I invited one of our valued.
And I would appreciate you not using that kind of language.
Again, you, it's perfectly, perfectly acceptable language, I don't know what school you come from, but, Mr. Sullivan, I would ask once again, if karma heads will prevail.
I just didn't want this to be a political.
No, no, we didn't, and thank you. I think this is an exciting thing to share with the community.
But I really said this to all parties concerned, and other, Mr. Jay Adams, who I actually have an appointment with next week.
Right.
And actually, I'm going to speak to the people of the council here. With the exception of Llewellyn Jones, the four of you actually appointed the people on that committee last year.
Right.
Beginning of 2013, you sent a group of people a letter and said, this is what you need to do. Two of those people, with the exception of Llewellyn last year, was, Lou was on the committee, and yourself, who've taken your guidance as being members of.
Please let him.
No, they're saying they can't hear you.
You can't? My big mouth, you can't hear? I can.
Did you just say you might?
I have.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we've had representatives of the council at those meetings, at every meeting, there's either been one or both. So, actually, at the, not the last meeting, which I think Mr. Llewellyn was there, Llewellyn Jones was there, you were at the library board meeting, prior to that, you were both there, and a decision was made that you were going to bring it to one of these meetings after the budget.
Precisely.
And I really thought this was going to be upstairs, a small group of people, you know, very intimate setting, there was going to be a group of, you know, five of you in a room, I brought five copies with you, not in a, not in a televised version here. I was kind of shocked walking into the council chambers here, that this is the way it was going to be presented. I'm not doing it the slight Mr. Giamas here, I'm not trying to do anything behind his back or anybody else's. But you know what it comes down to? What it comes down to, and I'm speaking from my heart, you have a group of people here in town that are looking for guidance from both him, Mr. Giamas, and yourselves. He knows that this committee's been formed, you know the committee's been formed. If somebody felt that it wasn't being done the right way, you should have come to the group on both sides. It doesn't matter what, doesn't matter who, but we meet every month. So, you had a choice to come to these meetings, there's other committees that are out there, there's a ton of people that volunteer in this town, and I don't care, you know, I, I've been working for almost 40 years in business, there's a lot of projects that get shot down. I could care less whether this one gets shot down, because there'll be another one behind it. Somebody brought this to us from the township to take a look at. They came up here and demonstrated it, and said, we're going to give you something for free for a year to try to develop it. So, you know what? As a taxpayer, I thought free was pretty decent. You know what? The end of that year, you can walk away from it because it costs you absolutely nothing. But no matter what, if you don't like it, then you throw the papers away. If you like it, you run with it. But for free, it costs you absolutely nothing. It costs you nothing but time, because your volunteers are doing it, you're not paying a penny for them to do any of the legwork for you. So, the end result is, is that, you know, I wish that at some point, you actually see what it is, instead of arguing back and forth about what you think it might be what it is. I have no idea what the other ones are. You know, I was very surprised to hear about the cable refranchising piece here, because I read the Scotch Plains Times every week, from cover to cover. I never knew it was going to be a public hearing, I was part of the last two. I actually had to move from Fios, I didn't want to move from Comcast. You know, I had to do that because they couldn't fix my cable. Not because I wanted to move from Comcast, I didn't want to notify 2,100 people, you know, that my email is going to change. That's the, that's the part I hated about having to move. So, if you want to look at this, if you want to do it, I'll give you this, look through it, the terms and agreements are in there. I can talk as much as you want, it's a free app, it's a part of the development process that we can either be part of, or another town is going to be part of. If we're not part of it, somebody else is going to be part of it. It doesn't matter whether we are or somebody else is. But again, it's free. It doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
You may want emphasis that they're, they are.
I think I've emphasized it enough.
I think you have too.
But the end result is, I don't, I never wanted this to be a political thing, I don't want people to appear to fight because it's me. I want people to fight because it's the right thing to do, if it's the right thing to do for the town. If it isn't, then throw it away. You know, this guy has the, the guy over there who you pay to be your lawyer has to vet the contract. I'm not a lawyer, maybe there's something in here that's hidden. But what it says here is, you can walk away from this at any time. Maybe there's some hidden agreement in here where you can't walk away from it either. That's what his job was to do, it's a boilerplate schedule. We believe as a part of the committee, it says for a year, we believe as part of the web development, and our time to help these people, and to give our opinions with it, you know, that you could probably get two years out of it. And that's the way I would, as a taxpayer, would say you should go into it. But that's part of your negotiations piece. And that's why, if he wanted to listen next Monday, I would actually, would have told him the same thing, but the end result is, that's the way to, so I'll leave this paperwork review, there's a copy free to you, to Mr. Giamas. And do me a favor, when people volunteer their times.
Thank you.
You know, there's a bold adage here, and I'm going to try to keep this clean as I, as I possibly can, but when things are happening, don't let it rain, because it might not be raining. I'm trying to clean it up as best as I can. So, here's a paper.
Mr. Sullivan, first of all, I've known you for many, many, many years, and I want to thank you for your ongoing service to the community. I think there's real value in what is being proposed, and obviously, today was just an opportunity to share conceptually what direction is available to us.
As long as individuals now who are willing to work in this town and live there all their lives, and still maintain a little bit of work in this town, you see a ton of people here who give all their time for other reasons, whether it's paying for all, or for some other reason, don't even apologize. We, I mean, it's all fair and fair, if I sit up here and volunteer your time, and I have a right to want to be a politician, because everybody wants to be done, no matter what they do. So, you're right to perform that.
Thank, thank, thank you, Dan.
I'm sorry.
That.
Actually, let that go through, Dan. That was a very nice call.
Don't we just move on? Let's move on.
Thank you.
Let's just, well, I wanted to, but apparently, you know, I think we've offended him enough. Not you, obviously. All right, well, sadly, to be continued, I think there's real value there, and I'm sorry for the way that went. I'm really disappointed.
It might have helped, Mayor, if you had sent this to us prior to tonight.
Mr. James will follow up, well, listen, listen, enough.
And I think the meeting was scheduled with the manager.
Enough, enough, this has been on the calendar for over two weeks now. As you said last week, maybe you should have looked at it sooner. So, I would like to move on. Downtown Development Committee appointments, I see something here, I don't know who put it here, but the idea of the apps that spend there for two weeks, folks. Okay.
Yes.
Moving on, Downtown Development Committee appointments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we appoint David Cechio, Jeff Laird, Joe Mortarolo, Tom Russo, Bill McClintock, and Joe Doyle as the Downtown Development Committee.
Second best. Okay, is there a discussion here about each individual, or are you looking to pass that en masse?
There was another name.
Putting, putting forward this as a slate, I believe that the guidelines for the appointment of these people to this downtown commission stated that we were to submit applications 14 days in, in advance for consideration to be approved. I believe you were given these applications incomplete 15 days ago, and therefore, as I said, my motion, if you look at their qualifications, they either have involvement in property ownership, business ownership, legal or development and/or planning.
Can I ask a question for the attorney?
Please. I would like anyone to make comments.
Is this finite, or is there the, I didn't understand that there was a finite determination as far as when appointments would be made to this committee?
Well, again, it's, it's a governing body decision whether there would be more or less, if someone wants to make that motion at a future date to include someone, that certainly is the prerogative. Councilman Vastine has proposed this group of volunteers at this time, and I don't think he's suggesting that it's over, but that's, it would be considered at a future meeting if someone had someone else that they wouldn't want.
I know that I submitted one other name, and if you looked at the information that was provided to you, this person would bring great value to the committee. I also know that there are other people who have approached me who are interested, and the issue is, they've asked me what exactly the committee is to do, and I, I really would like to not have an argument tonight, but I'm struggling a bit with this. And, you know, Mr. Sullivan raises a good point. Part of this is the format of this meeting. We're creating another committee, and you may or may not be aware, but there was, you know, a rather challenging email exchange as far as the role of a committee, a separate committee, other than the technology committee recently. And now the technology committee, again, we, we kind of discussed this tonight. So, my issue is that I didn't know how to answer people as far as what this downtown committee, what their specific role would be, because in two other very similar instances recently, we've, we've kind of gone away from some of the recommendations of the committee. So, I'm looking for clarification as far as what exactly this committee is to do, and whether or not you're suggesting this evening that the names that have been, that you just listed, that did not include Mrs. Dryer, are finite, in your minds, as you put them forward today?
I see this as a, first of all, this committee was created in the absence of our SID, which, as we might all recall, was blown apart by not being provided with the funding from the previous council. I believe that the SID was dysfunctional throughout its tenure, and my belief is that either A, we can do something in downtown to improve downtown, once and for all, or B, all we can really do is put fresh flowers out and a fresh coat of paint every 10 years. If there's something beyond that, if there's.
Interesting, but I'm just asking for an answer to my question.
I'm answering your question.
No.
I can simply answer the question, that there's nothing in the enabling resolution that limits the number of people on the committee.
Or is there a specific, is it finite, that, in other words, if the names are not in front of us 15 days ago, is there a reason that we cannot continue forward? First of all, Mrs. Dryer's nomination, I mean, this is the president of the newcomers club, she's the head of the mothers group at St. Bartholomew's. This is, this is as nonpartisan as it gets, and she's a perfect addition to this committee.
The way the resolution is, actually, the application, it, it provides that the application has to be submitted no later than two weeks prior to the conference meeting in order to be considered. So, that's, to answer your question, if it's been presented sooner than that time, really can't be considered at this meeting.
So, to, in two, in two more meetings, I can put this, this person's name forward?
You have the right to do that, there's no limitation on number.
Is there, is there a timeline as far as when this committee will be meeting? Or parameters as far as what the role of this committee will be?
The function's, it's, it's an advisory committee, and it really would sunshine when the governing body determines that it should no longer exist.
Jeff, I'm really trying to keep this as simple as possible.
Simple is, when you want it to stop, it stops.
I, no, but we're creating a committee, and the same, literally one agenda item after, the, the committee was created, and now we're appointing people to the committee, and some of these names are excellent names that I would support definitely. So, it's not a matter of that, but what I'm saying is, for several months of meetings, I've suggested. of that. But what I'm saying is, for several months of meetings, I've suggested that we develop parameters, specific guidelines for the role of these advisory committees.
I can tell you that.
So that what happened this evening does not occur. Or what happened last week that I copied you in the email chain does not occur. Nobody should pay a babysitter to come to a meeting, to volunteer their time, and make recommendations, and receive information that sounded anything like what went on last week, or what went on this evening.
The, to answer your question, the resolution that was adopted by the governing body, it had a purpose, and it identified one, two, three, four, five, six purposes that.
Jeff, I think that's great, and I can read. I do have a master's degree. I, I believe me, I, no, no, no.
I understand your question.
My question is, do we have any level, do we have any protocol established to create that the chair goes to the manager, or any of the, in, in other words, as we've yet added yet another committee, do we have anything to prevent what just happened from happening with the people who are about to volunteer their time for this committee now?
You mean what just happened, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand.
That's an advisory committee. This is an advisory committee.
Right.
If this advisory committee now spends 55 hours between now and the next council conference meeting.
Right.
Do we have anything, any training in place? Do we have any specific protocol about how they bring information to the council?
I, I think, I can't, obviously can't speak to the resolutions that were established for the, but this commit, you know, it does charge them with the responsibilities, but as far as their relationship to the governing body, and what they're going to actually report, and how they're going to do that, in paragraph nine, it says that you will review, the mayor and council, will review the recommendations of the committee, and they will be non-binding on the mayor and council. So I think this one is clear, but the other ones are not.
Okay, but that, that, I respectfully, Mr. James, that's still not clear to me. Because now, if the chairperson of that committee was to come to the next conference meeting and offer fabulous, amazing suggestions for what to do with the downtown, it, would there then be an issue of you need to go to the manager, an appointment needs to be made, all I'm, and I don't think it's specific to this committee. What I'm saying is, if, why don't we create a protocol? Why is there not training?
This committee does that. This committee says they would go to the mayor and council and provide those, their recommendations. Certainly, you have the right to, you know, not adhere to them. You know, the other committees.
But under our system of government, you are in charge. As we've been reminded, I mean, so the mayor and council have literally no ability to do anything once they come and stand in front of us.
Well, I think what's going to happen, based on what I'm reading in the paragraph two with the subsections, you know, any information that they provide, or any recommendations they provide, are not really going to be related to the day-to-day operations of the town. They're going to be, you know, related to the master plan, and the policy, and the overriding policy that the governing body has full control over.
But, but Mr. Jones, you, you've made it perfectly clear on several reasons. To, to me personally, your opinion about ad hoc committees, which this is, okay, and even the necessity of having it. And I think, truth be known, you'd probably say, we don't need the Technology Committee, or we don't need some of these other, and that's fair. I mean, it's good. But now we're creating another committee, okay, which is contrary to what many feel that you are a very capable manager, of, which you might believe that is not good for this town. And I think there's one little caveat here. When this original proposal was drawn up, I don't think it was the intent, certainly wasn't mine, to have people sit on a board that's going to determine the future of Scotch Plains that are not even residents of Scotch Plains. I mean, that was a concern, you know, in the past. And, and here, I look at applications of folks who don't live in town. And, and we're discussing the future of our downtown. So maybe, that, I'm sure that wasn't intentional. But I think, you know, in view of these, some of these folks, I think that has to be, you know, reviewed and discussed. Is, is that in the best interest of the town to have non-residents part of an ad hoc committee, which you're not supportive of, to, you know, discuss what our future?
I got to clarify something, and, you know, I'm not, I don't disagree with your assessment of the Technology Committee, and we've talked about that. You know, this ad hoc committee that was created by the council, not me.
No, no, I understand that.
Gives very clear guidelines for what this committee's supposed to do, and how they're supposed to report their information. And ultimately, it would be, you know, you folks and me giving an opinion to you, based on what they say, and what, what you all think's in the best interest of the community. With respect to other ad hoc committees, I wasn't here when they were created. All I can tell you is, you know, some of those have, you know, their input is more related to the day-to-day operations, and that's where the distinction is. This is not related to day-to-day operations. This is a policy matter that I don't have the authority over, each and every one of you folks. That's, that, I'm not speaking to my support of or opposition to this, but that's the very distinct difference between this committee and other ad hoc committees.
But, but moving the downtown forward has been a very passionate discussion for long before I was on council and other people were on council. There were proposals to move this building out of town in 2000, never took place, okay? And maybe it was a missed opportunity. But, but, but I think there's a very important oversight here. And, and I, and I really have a problem voting for people, and, and some of them are very capable. I know many of them, who, I'll, I'll make a very, don't have skin in the game. They don't live in this town. And, and that's, and, and I don't care if they own a business in the town. I mean, my constituents, I think, would be disappointed to hear that we, we, we are, the future of Scotch Plains is going to be an issue.
So, so Mayor, are, are your constituents just voters, or property taxpayers?
No, no, I'm talking about the voters of Scotch Plains.
So, so if you pay property taxes in Scotch Plains, you don't consider them to be someone with skin in the game?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm saying to you that the future development of the downtown, okay, is, is not well represented here, first and foremost. And, and, you know, I just, again, folks, another committee, and I will tell you going forward, trust me when I tell you, in front of this council, and there may be a majority, they'll carry more money to be spent, more of your tax dollars to be spent on some other grandiose proposal. We've been there, we've done that.
Actually, tax dollars.
I didn't ask you to interrupt me. I think Ms. Jelenella had a point she was trying to make, and you interrupted her.
My point that I was trying to make is, we should possibly move these, move these names forward for a roll call vote. I understand that. But as a side issue, I would really ask, Jerry, Mr. James, that you develop some sort of protocol for all of our committees. I, I disagree that that language is clear. I think there needs to be, basically akin to an employee handbook. This, these are the steps that you take, so that anytime somebody's presented in front of the council, do you understand?
I do, and I think in doing that, and I'll certainly, but Jeff, to make sure anything we write is consistent with the law. But I, I would emphasize it would certainly be, you know, two levels of it. One, a committee that's charged with making recommendations to staff members on how they run their departments. And two, a committee making recommendations to the governing body about overall policy of the town. I think we can work something up on that.
I would love, I love that people volunteer. We have a wealth of talent in the town. I just want to make sure that they know that their time is not being wasted. That's all I'm asking for.
Do you make a few comments if I may, please? Please?
First of all, I'd like to make very clear that this committee has been created by a resolution that this council just recently passed within the last month, so we should all be aware of what's in it. One of the stipulations in that creation is that this committee has no power to spend any money. It's very clear. If they want to spend any money, they have to come back to this council and ask permission for any kind of expenditure. Secondly, this committee is overwhelmingly, as constituted by the nominations put forward tonight, overwhelmingly composed of people who are residents of Scotch Plains. But like the SID before it, there are many different stakeholders in the downtown, and so this committee brings, draws on a number of different stakeholders from the downtown, and their different sorts of expertise. I just want to speak a little bit to the notion, again, of, of preparedness for, for, for these meetings, you know. This, this was, again, a resolution that we passed, stipulated very clearly in there that, you know, we put forward these nominations in writing 14 days in advance. We have time to review all of them. This, this additional resume came in today, a couple hours before the meeting. It might be a great resume, and maybe we can, in the future, add that person to this committee. But, you know, we, we make rules for a reason, and then we ought to, trying to stick to those rules. So with that, I, you know, I'd like to go ahead.
That's a reasonable suggestion. But a point that I would like to just make sure that the public is very clear of, we are moving forward a committee at this point with absolutely no diversity.
I think this discussion is awful.
In gender, in anything. Even, I, I mean, far be it for me, I believe that all of these people fall into the same age group, even. We're talking about developing stakeholders. When you really look at the statistics as far as who is going to be spending their time and their money in a downtown area, I think you're making a drastic mistake not putting president of the newcomers' club, young, young mother who lives in the community. This is, and if I showed you the email exchange, this is not a partisan engaged in politics at any level. I understand what you're saying about the rules. The resume came to me today because of the, of the exchange and the dialogue and the length of time that it took. So it's, if there are meetings in the interim, I'm just suggesting that it would be nice if we could consider this nomination.
Fair, fair enough, and I'm not saying no to it. But again, you're, you're telling me things about this person that, in the information that was sent to me today, I couldn't even find that information. That's why we want things in advance, so we can, you know, those of us who try and do our homework on this can have the chance to do our homework.
I'd like to call the question, please.
I'd, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to ask you a question. I think we've had a lot of debate here. There's been a lot of discussion about it. I want to understand, if this is, these names are being proposed as a slate, then I see no reason to further debate them, okay? Everyone has it. If they're proposed as a slate, I would look for, we could take a roll call on them as a slate, recognizing that Councilwoman Jelenella has someone who, based on these rules, could be, will be suggested, you know, to be considered at our next meeting. So with that, to move along, Mr. Lara, I think, is that fair? I'm, can we move along? Is that okay? Do you have one comment?
I do, I do. I just think it's unfortunate that the discussion has been conducted the way it has. I mean, I don't see why this is such a controversial topic. Clearly, one of the big issues in town is what can we do about the downtown? And this is a committee that is being put together to consider what can be done with the downtown. I think it's clear, and Mr. James has pointed out, that ultimately, the committee will come up with recommendations. There's absolutely nothing binding that that committee will come up with that will bind the town council or the town manager in terms of implementing any possible recommendations. Ultimately, that, those decisions are going to fall upon the town council and the town manager. So, you know, when this idea was first suggested, you know, one of my comments was, it's a good idea to get the ball rolling. And that's what this committee is going to do, is to get the ball rolling. You know, the names have been advanced. People can evaluate the names of the people who have been proposed one way or the other. But the bottom line is that, from what I see, all the names that have been advanced prior to today all have a connection to our town one way or the, the other. So they're either residents, or connected in some other way, and they offer expertise in that regard. So.
Thank you.
That's the way I see it.
Thank you. Well, recognizing that, Ms. Lara, let's go back and let's have a roll call on the slate then, I guess. Bonnie, would you please?
Mrs. Jelenella? I don't understand why it's a slate, and why the names aren't being submitted for individual vote. I think that's, that's a foolish way to move forward. I would like to vote on the names individually. There's no reason that they have to be put forward as a slate. Jeff, nothing at all?
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm asking that the motion be reconsidered by the council. I understand there's a motion on the floor. I'm asking the council to reconsider the fact, there is no reason whatsoever that this being, this is being put forward as a slate. It.
There is a mo, there is a motion. There has been a second. I, I would assume, I respect what Ms. Jelenella is saying, but I think there's a vote on the slate. Ms. Lara?
That's correct.
So I think we have to go through with this vote. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Jelenella?
You can abstain.
I can, I have no grounds to abstain.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we, to get, we're going to take a vote.
Mr. Jones?
I'm sorry, what was the vote? No, she has no grounds to abstain.
She did not abstain. I've been waiting to hear what she's deciding. Ms. Jelenella, please.
I know. I'm going to vote no. And this is, I, I would like the opportunity to make a comment on my vote.
No, you don't have the opportunity to comment.
Wait, 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 listen, next, please.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastin?
Aye.
Mayor Lovett?
Nay.
I, I have something to say, and this is a conference meeting, and I am a member of this governing.
Anyone that votes in the negative on any issue does not have the, a right to comment after the vote.
This is a conference meeting.
There certainly will be an opportunity toward the end of the meeting for council comments.
Yes. So let's, 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 let's take advantage of that. We, the next item on the agenda are speed limits, proposed reductions. I'm going to turn to you, Mr. James, I assume, since we don't have the chief of police or a sergeant here.
Sure. Sergeant Hernandez has written two detailed memos on two roads, Jerusalem Road and Raritan Road. The memorandum is consistent with how speed reduction memos have been written here in the past, and that they are, you know, in other communities throughout the state. And both recommendations, he's proposing a reduction to 30 miles an hour. Jerusalem Road has, you know, a couple different speed limits throughout it, as he explained. He wants to make that consistent, and Raritan Road, he wants to make it to 30 miles an hour, you know, based on his analysis.
Raritan Road, excuse me, what speed?
30. Reduce it to 30.
Why not 25?
Where is the speed limit today on Raritan Road? I thought it was, oh, 40.
35.
Thirty, it is 35?
His analysis on that is, is, well, he says it's not an excessive speed. On a wide urban road with shoulders and sidewalk, it's too fast for that road being an all country road. And he thinks 30 will reduce the, not just the number of accidents, but the severity of the accidents.
Could we not have the police chief present for these kinds of conversations? Is he not available today?
No, he is. It's just, this is apparently consistent with how it's been, the memorandum comes to you. Do you agree with the memorandum? You can move forward with an ordinance, and if you want him at a public hearing, certainly. You know, I, I don't care how you do it, to be honest with you, but this is how it's been done at the best, or how it's been compared to.
He, he, in the past, Mr. James, we've had, you know, the chief and Sergeant Hernandez, who I believe is the traffic gentleman, here. I mean, this is a substantive change in the community, probably a very good one. You know, I will make that assumption. But I, I think it's important that before we, that, that, that we should have one of those professionals, if not both of them, on, on, at, at this meeting to discuss this. I mean, there's no urgency in doing it, but this is highly irregular, because I don't think we've ever proposed something where one of them wasn't here. That's all I have to, does anybody else have a comment on that front?
I, I would simply comment on the substantive proposals here. I mean, I would simply say that certainly as it pertains to Raritan Road, first of all, there's two different speed limits on it currently. One section is 40, one is 35.
That's why I thought it was 40.
Right, right. It's right in the memo.
Yeah, no, that's why, when I asked, I mean.
And the same thing on Jerusalem Road, and, you know, I don't have any, you know, the mayor has spoken regarding the issue of getting further information. But what I would simply say is, I would certainly support lowering the speed limit in both locations, and as Councilwoman Jelenella suggests, perhaps even going lower. So I have no problem at all with that.
But I, but I think it would be wise, it'd be very helpful to have one of our leaders, you know, in the police force here, to share with us, you know, their reason. I mean, it's obvious, look, 25 is safer than 30, 30 is safer than 35, but I'd like to know more about, you know, what prompted it. Was it accidents? Was ticketing issues? I mean, I think.
No problem with that, but.
So why don't we just do that? I mean, I don't think we have to pass or have this opening ordinance in two weeks. Let's, let's get them there for discussion, please.
If I may.
Both, both, sorry, Councilman.
Yeah, if I may, both of these issues are very exact and definitely laid out in these memos that we received from the police. memos that we received from the police department. Quite frankly, each one, one of them's two pages long, and goes into the detail of the scientific method by which they determine speed limits. The third one, or the second one, is a three-page memo, and goes into specific details about how they came to this conclusion. Sergeant Hernandez is our traffic officer, and it's his responsibility to travel around our town and look at potential problems and ways in which to make our streets safer. I don't think it has to be dictated by accidents, although that is obviously a catalyst to consider change, but ultimately, he's made a proposal to us in great detail, and I'm not quite frankly sure what more we would get from having him here, other than his charming personality. So, if you've made a motion to table this, that's fine, but I would suggest we move forward this, from my perspective.
I don't know why it's necessary to be a contrarian here. We've had them here in the past, it's consistent with the...
I'm not being a contrarian, I'm saying, let's not waste time.
We're talking about public...
Results.
Mr. Vashti, you have great license in looking to waste people's time, but that's okay. I would just suggest that to be consistent with how we've operated in the past, and whether your definition of him, that his charm, or however you phrase that, reference to the chief, I just think we have a very professional chief, very capable, who the township citizens pay a lot of money to, and it would be good to hear from him firsthand, rather than just... We could always mail it in, you know, I mean, and, you know, we don't even have to have a council meeting. We'll just turn around and we'll mail in our votes. So, anyway, that's my suggestion. We table it until we have the chief or his sergeant designate here to talk to us about it. As I said, it might be, I'm sure it's a very good idea, I'd just like to hear...
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion to table, there's a second.
There is a second.
Roll call vote, please.
Can I ask, what are we tabling? I mean, this is a discussion...
Not to kill it, just to have the chief here to talk to us firsthand, rather than...
And if we don't table, then it's a first reading on an ordinance? I mean, I think he's asking, what's the alternative?
The action you do is directly to prepare the ordinance, or the local ordinance is going to be...
Right, and have the chief here to talk to us.
And that would just be a first reading, there'd still be, if we didn't like it, there'd still be an opportunity to amend, et cetera.
Absolutely. But that's not what the motion was that he made. The motion he made was to table, and Colleen or Ms. Jill Anella seconded that.
That's, she did.
So, why would we table it if, if all we're doing is directing him to draft the ordinance?
The motion that's been made...
I understand that, okay, very good, thank you. So, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Jill Anella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Mr. Vashti?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Aye.
Does someone want to make a motion to directly prepare the ordinance?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that you prepare this ordinance for the, for the next council meeting and public hearing portion, and if it makes sense, Mr. Manager, if you would have the police chief here to answer any potential questions that might arise during the reading of the ordinance and public hearing.
Can I ask, Mr. Lera, that you prepare two versions of the motion, one with the speed limit of 30, as suggested, and one with the speed limit of 25? This way, we're not paying duplicate legal fees if, based on the conversation...
We decide.
...we decided to change. So, could you prepare two draft ordinances, please?
It's not up to me, it's up to the council.
Well, I think that's a reasonable request, I think that's what we're asking.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Please, Mr. Vashti.
Can I ask, I mean, is that a change that we could just make at the meeting, if we decided?
I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Jill Anella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
What are we voting?
Well, I got to tell you, you talk to your running mate, because we're all trying to figure him out.
Please, Mayor, do try to keep up.
Aye.
We will, we're looking forward to that, too, going forward.
Aye.
Mr. Vashti? Mayor Glover?
Aye, thank you. Well, we'll look forward to seeing the chief here or Sergeant Hernandez. Another entertaining session in the township of Saskatchewan, ladies and gentlemen. It's how we govern here.
They may be joining us up in Livingston.
They might be, right? We might ask them, Deputy Mayor, okay. The next item up here is DCA services. I put this on here, as you recall, some of you may recall, from our last public meeting, we moved a resolution to hire a outside counsel, one that we've not used in the past, to do some investigation. To investigate a matter that we haven't got into great detail with, Mr. Giles? If I'm correct?
Not publicly.
Okay, not publicly. But we hired a counsel who we've really not met, it was $5,000. My question is, and I've had conversations with Ms. Delara on this, rather than have spent $5,000, which the majority of this council felt that we ought to do, to hire this new attorney, why we might not have considered, and I asked Ms. Delara this again, using the Department of Community Affairs, the state folks, who would have charged us nothing, and I don't know why that wasn't given as an option last time. I don't know how far we've moved on this investigation, which is still unclear to me, and whether that still might be an option to spend no tax dollars. So, Ms. Delara, I don't know if that is an option.
Well, my only question in the comment on this is, yes, the Department of Community Affairs does have the ability, to the extent that this is focused on one municipal official, then, and I really need to be careful about who that is and the title of that official.
I understand.
But to the extent that it's focused on one municipal official, that department does have the ability to investigate. So, to the extent that it's not a focus of one individual, and that's something I think that needs to be clarified, then, but if it is focused on one individual, one title, then the DCA does provide that investigatory power.
This is an investigation into a process, departmental slash employee investigation. It is underway, and I can tell you that if there's any reason, based on the conclusions, that something needs to be forwarded to the local finance board for the investigative people at the DCA, it absolutely will. You know, I do have the authority to investigate officials and departments of the municipality that set forth in state statute and the municipal code, which adopts that state statute. So, I mean, this is an investigation into a process that involves a few different situations, and that's, you know, not going to get too into it in public, and, you know, the councils moved forward, and they voted, and the investigation's underway, so I don't, you know...
Okay, I would just, you know, maybe going forward, when we do have options, and it looks like there was an option here, that, you know, that be shared with the council myself.
I'm not sure that's an option, considering what we're doing.
Okay, well, since it's so vague on what's going on here, and we understand, but maybe I don't understand, so that, I guess, to the best of your ability, clarifies your position, and I don't know if it completely addresses my concern, other than to say, you know, we're all here trying to do the right thing. Okay. All right, that was my reason for putting it there. The next thing is sewer utility referendum, that's mine as well. As many of you know, I've never been a proponent of our sewer utility. You know, after several discussions, it was concluded that the only way we could dissolve the utility was through public referendum, as it relates to cap issues, and what I'm asking, and I've asked Ms. Delara to prepare an ordinance for the council's review on public referendum, to dissolve the sewer utility, and to place that back into the municipal budget, so that our shareholders, our taxpayers, you know, are more fairly dealt with. So, that's, I put it there, I would like us to at least entertain having Ms. Delara put together an ordinance for our review, and I move such.
So, that is a motion, making a motion?
That is a motion. I mean, Ms. Delara, is that the way we need to proceed?
Well, yes, but I also need to clarify a few things, that timing-wise, the local finance notice that comes out every year, I just want you to be aware of timing on this. You would have to actually do a referendum on your cap levy to exceed the 2%.
Right.
And you're aware, you're all aware of that, there would be a referendum on that, that would be involved, and the local finance notice for this year, we're beyond the timeframe to do that.
You mentioned that last name, yes, sir.
Right, it would be, we would have to wait for the new local finance notice to come out, to see what the timeframes are in 2015, and I'm questioning only moving forward, because you don't know what your budget's going to look like for 2015 yet, and you don't know about the 2%, whether you will exceed the 2%, and if you do, the timing will be a little different, and that notice will identify what your time deadlines are for a referendum. Probably April, mid-April is what you're talking about for a referendum deadline on your 2% of 2015. I just want you to understand timing.
Well, I was thinking, you know, in line of, to have good public participation for the November ballot in 2015, if that were possible.
Right, so I guess my question is, what are you directing me to do?
To prepare a public referendum to exceed the 2% cap.
There's two steps, understand. One is that you have to do a resolution authorizing the notice of availability of mail-in ballots.
Can I make a point of order?
Can, will he finish?
The mayor made a motion, but there was no second, so I don't know why we're having this discussion.
All right, okay, I'm sorry.
There was a second.
I was just talking about a clarification, there was a motion, and then I don't know whether there was a second.
There was a second.
There is a second, but I just want to make sure that we're being very cautious as we move forward with the language, because it's not that the mayor's asking to raise the, to increase the tax levy arbitrarily. What he's suggesting is that the sewer tax that people are currently paying and are not able to deduct, either deduct from their income tax, or as a matter of convenience, pay when they pay their property taxes, be returned to the property tax bill for the convenience of our residents, and so that they could recoup approximately a third of that money on their income taxes, as was suggested in the past at a council meeting. So, I just want to be very cautious with our wording.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Can I ask, can I ask a simple question? I just want to ask a simple question.
Can he just clarify?
All right.
If I may, Councilman Martin, doing that is what triggers the levy cap referendum, because as the audit said, and as I can tell you, and as a CFO can tell you, there's no legitimate way to do that without exceeding the 2% levy cap.
We understand that.
So, with that being said, the only way to do it is an April 2015 referendum, not a November 2015. And, you know, Jeff can comment on this further, but as we have talked about, and you indicated in an email, that a resolution ends at the end of the year. This council doesn't have the authority to pass a resolution to bind a future council, which means you wouldn't have the authority to pass such a resolution until January. Is that correct?
That's correct. Any resolution you do now cannot bind a future governing body. They die at the end of the year, as a matter of law. So, I guess, we're both asking, what is it that you're asking us to do, when you can't even have a referendum until April of 2015? We don't even know what your budget looks like in 2015.
I understand that, I mean, clearly, we don't know what the budget's going to look like, but we need to have a sentiment, I would like, from this sitting council, as to whether they agree that this utility, okay, time has passed, that it hasn't accomplished what it was intended to accomplish, that has created hardship, inconveniences, and penalized our citizens. And I recognize, you know, the April threshold and the November threshold of next year, but I, again, I have a motion, and I'd be curious to say, and I understand there's the issue, we don't know who will sit on this council come January, but I'd like to have a sentiment from this council as to how they weigh in on this.
So, he's not asking, I think then, to answer your question, Mayor, you're not asking for Mr. Lera to draft a...
Well, I was asking him to draft an ordinance, because I think it's important, excuse me, try to humor yourself, but not the citizens...
I can't, you're humoring me for me.
Well, listen, listen, you know, we'll see. What I'd like to see, Ms. Delara, is an ordinance, okay, that talks about specifics of what would be involved. We spend a lot of money, a lot of legal time, I'm sure, now with our downtown advisory group, that we will spend, in spite of what you hear, lots of money at some point, with all kinds of more recommendations, how to improve downtown, but I'd like to have just a little more input on what it really would take to do that.
That's not the motion, that's point of order.
It's a point of order, can you let the councilor speak?
You're asking us to vote on a motion, and you're changing your motion in the sentence.
I'm asking, I'm asking the council, the council, I'm not changing one. Will you, for once, actually, we, November can't come soon enough. Go ahead, Ms. Delara.
An ordinance at this juncture is, Mayor, just understand that to do this, it's not really an ordinance, it's two resolutions, one to do mail-in ballots, if you want to do mail-in ballots, and the second is the authorizing resolution approving the referendum question. There's two resolutions, one following the other, and you really won't know those, the answer to those issues, until you know what your budget looks like, and I've told you that, but the resolution you're asking me to do, the ordinance you're asking me to do, after my further research on local finance notice 2014-3, there really isn't an ordinance, so to speak, it's, you're asking to, two resolutions to ultimately put it on a referendum question.
Hey, Ms. Delara, as you know, you and I spoke, we had coffee, we talked, that this was something I was going to bring up today.
Right, you talked about it.
And you had given me some guidance...
You said to me, please look into this.
Yeah, and I said, give me some guidance on how to go about this. So, if you're suggesting that we have to go about it in two resolutions, I, you know, I mean, I'd love to hear what my colleagues think, I mean, whether their sentiment for maintaining this utility.
I would love to comment.
Yeah.
I would love to comment. I have to say, you know, we do some things on this council that sometimes I question the value or the purpose of the time that we spend debating certain issues to the level that they're debating. This one, I really don't understand, for the very simple reason that, I mean, Jeff and Jerry, you've made it quite clear, that there is no legal ability to do anything in this calendar year, in terms of what's being suggested, that the whole premise of putting forth resolutions in this regard can't even come into being until 2015. We're talking about addressing a tax levy cap for the 2015 calendar year. Well, we're in 2014, so we have no ability, and as you said, to bind another council by taking action this year on a subject that is completely premature at this juncture. So, I don't understand why we're spending time even considering this. We're not here to make expressions or to give sentiment, we're here to do business and to legislate and, you know, create policy. If I understand the situation correctly, this issue does not, is not ripe for consideration until the new year, 2015.
Based upon the input that I've heard from Ms. Delara, Deputy Mayor, let me finish, then I will withdraw, I will save us some time. For today's purposes, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Maybe that gets us moving along. Is there a second? Do we withdraw the vote?
We still haven't voted on your motion, and it takes a vote to withdraw.
Ms. Delara?
There's been a motion, and then, and there's been a second. The person who makes the motion can certainly ask that his motion be withdrawn, so that person has done so, and then, I don't know if there's been a second to allow the motion to be withdrawn. But the person who, under Robert's rules, who makes the motion, certainly has a right to ask that it be withdrawn.
And I took your second. So, we have a motion, we, I made the motion, it's been seconded.
And you've made a motion to withdraw.
And that's exactly right, Ms. Delara. So, I think we have followed Robert's rules to the T, and I will continue this discussion as I feel that the township citizens have really taken it on the chin with this.
Could we get a roll call on that withdrawal motion, please?
By all means.
Mrs. Jill Anella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Tentative?
Aye.
Tentative?
Aye.
Mr. Rasty?
Aye.
Since I made the motion, I, aye. To be continued, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, let's keep moving along. The next thing I see here.
Is good.
Complete Streets movement, I don't, I didn't put that there, but, uh...
Complete Streets was something that I raised, um, in the past in conversations with Councilman Jimes, I mean, excuse me, with, um, Mr. Jimes, and I brought forward at, um, at a very cursory level at other council meetings. Complete Streets, um, as you will hear from, um, the presenter, also has the potential to move us forward, um, in my hope toward an application to become, um, a community that's recognized through Sustainable Jersey. Jana lives in town. She is an athlete, she is a, a young mother, um, and has a voice as to how some neighboring communities and other communities in New Jersey have moved forward with these projects and how it has benefited, um, benefited them. So at the last council meeting, um, I suggested that May being Bicycle Safety Week, Bicycle Safety Month, this was a nice opportunity for really, for us to, as a council, to begin to explore the options of a complete street policy for Scotch Plains. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, and I really appreciate, um, allowing me to present you with this late hour.
Jana, just pull the, no, I appreciate your waiting an hour and a half. Pull the microphone closer to you.
So I will, I will try to keep this as engaging as possible. Um, I do have my cards.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mayor, a number of members of the council, thank you again for having me. Um, and I, I come from Tri-State Transportation Campaign, um, and I'm here in two capacities. One, as the New Jersey Advocate for Tri-State Transportation Campaign and as well as a Scotch Plains resident. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with Tri-State Transportation Campaign. We're often, um, in, in the news and, and, uh, I was just recently on the front page of the Star Ledger on Friday. Um, we are a nonpartisan, um, transportation advocacy organization, uh, working in the tri-state area. Um, we are philanthropically funded, um, and we look to promote, uh, a sustainable transportation policy through transportation funding. I'm very engaged in the conversation that's going on in Trenton right now on transportation funding, um, and I regularly appear before the, the committees down there, um, and also with bicycle and pedestrian safety. I'm both in, I'm in a, well, I'm an attorney, I'm an advocate, um, and I'm a lobbyist. But I'm here to present on Complete Streets, and it was, it was interesting to sit here and listen to everything that was being discussed, um, because I think, um, when you're taking in what I have to say, and it, it's going to be pretty information-packed, also thinking about it in terms of economic development, um, as well as safety, because I did hear about, um, talk about reducing speed limits. And, um, as an athlete, as an iron man and a marathoner, um, I utilize the streets, that is my gym, um, and I, I would love to see, um, Scotch Plains take some of these Complete Streets ideas to help with the speed. Because speed limit is one way to reduce, but the concepts that I will be presenting in Complete Streets would help with some of, some of those concerns. So what is Complete Streets? Complete Streets are streets designed for all users, all modes, and all ability levels. So it takes into consideration that roads are not just for automobiles, pedestrians, cyclists, transit, emergency responders, um, and the goods of, a movement of goods on the roadway. So that is a complete street. And what are Complete Streets? It's not a one-size-fits-all. Every street is different, every municipality is different, every county is different. That is the great thing about Complete Streets is that one size does not fit all. It varies on the context, the type of roadway, and it is not expensive. Sometimes Complete Streets is literally just paint. What a Complete Streets policy is not, it's not about adding sidewalks and bike lanes to every road. It does not mean all streets must immediately be changed, and it is not a magic formula. It's a change in the way of thinking, and this is a national movement. The DOT has passed policies, I'm sorry, the DOT has passed a policy in 2009, and I'll talk about other municipalities that have passed policies. But this is a way of moving forward and thinking about how Scotch Plains is going to develop and grow. I've lived in this area my whole life. I lived in Westfield on Edgewood Avenue on the border of Westfield and Scotch Plains, and I've now lived in Scotch Plains coming on seven years. So I've seen how this area has changed. So this is a way of accommodating those changes. So what makes a street complete? Sidewalks, bike lanes, road painting, frequent and safe crossing opportunities, crossing islands, accessible pedestrian signals, comfortable and accessible public transportation stops. That could mean well, well-signed, well-lit, someplace to sit, oop, sorry. And there's, there's more. But these are just examples of what would make a, a street complete, looking at a street as more than just moving a vehicle. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about bike lanes as well. There are different kinds of bike lanes, again, it's conception, it's context-specific. Bike lanes give space for bicyclists to ride and makes them more visible to drivers. And there are a couple of different kinds of bike lanes depending upon the width of the road. Without bike lanes, bicyclists are exposed to moving traffic. So you can see the cyclist has got to move with the traffic, there's no specific place for the cyclist to be. Here, they're separated, you see this often in New York City where it's protected by a row of parked cars. This is in Newark, um, these are buffered bike lanes, you see a buffer here. It's not a very wide buffer, um, but they can go up to five feet if anyone vacations down the shore, anywhere between Seaside Heights and Bayhead where the Route 35 Sandy Reconstruction is going, you're going to have buffered bike lanes down there. Or bike sharrows. As you can see here, the, the roadway is very narrow, but, so there's the usage of sharrows. This is a visual cue to both cyclists and motorists saying, hey motorists, watch out, there's going to be cyclists, and hey cyclists, this is where you need to be. As I said, Complete Streets is a national movement, um, changing how we view our communities and how we build and design our streets. And the state of New Jersey passed a policy in December of 2009. Montclair was actually the first municipality to pass a policy, and that was done before the state of New Jersey. Right now, seven counties have passed policies, and I'm currently working with Union County to pass the policy. Ninety-four municipalities, and that number seems to be growing daily. And that was as of May, uh, 2013, that, that map. But as of, uh, today, there were ninety-four municipalities, um, but there were a few that I noticed that were not on, um, one of the lists. New Jersey's policy is ranked strongest in the nation, and its aim is to create a comprehensive multimodal network of transportation options. It applies to new construction and retrofit projects. So if you're, if it's a new road, they have to apply their policy, um, and even if they're going to do a project on an old road, um, let's see. I have a video, but I don't know if you really want to see the video at this point. It's a ten-minute video, um, created by the Department of Transportation, and I can send you the link.
Could the council get a link to it?
Absolutely, I can send you a link and you can watch it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, what are the benefits to Complete Streets? Mobility for all users, safety, equity for non-drivers, health, quality of life, economic vitality, and environmental benefits. Complete Streets makes a municipality, a county, and a state complete. The safety, uh, examples, the safety examples for Complete Streets are pretty obvious to me. They give pedestrians a safe place to be, away from vehicles, um, safe place, safe way to cross, uh, pedestrian countdown clocks is an example to, give a visual cue to pedestrians, say, do I have ten seconds to cross the street? Do I have two seconds to cross the street? Non-drivers, some people are choosing not to have vehicles. It gives people a way to get, to get around safely, whether it's by bicycle or on foot or on transit. For health reasons, it gives people the ability to, to be outside, um, to exercise, uh, both children and adults. Economic vitality, right now I'm working with Cranford, um, with the Economic Development Director to utilize Complete Streets. They passed a policy in September, which I wrote for them, um, and how to utilize Complete Streets to revitalize their downtown. And the economic benefits, we have a lot of congestion. I mean, there's, there's many times when I've sat trying to get through downtown Scotch Plains all the way backed up almost to, uh, to, is it, it's Midway or North Avenue. We want to reduce the number of vehicles going into downtown and giving people the option of riding their bicycles is one of them, by providing Complete Streets and to give them the ability to ride bikes downtown or to walk downtown. So it's hopefully to reduce, reduce congestion. And what is incomplete streets costing you? Many of the underserved, underserved by your incomplete streets, um, children, seniors, households without cars, persons with disability, are those who just choose to bike or walk or take transit to work. What I'm thinking, I think about transit, when I look on the Scotch Plains Fanwood Facebook page, I often see people wanting to find out how they can take their car to the train station. These people live a mile from the train station, um, and they have to drive their car a mile. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to have the ability to feel safe riding your bike to transit? It would reduce congestion and it would, you know, it's just another way to get people, um, outside and to attract people to Scotch Plains. Look at this as to also potentially, you know, in, you know, I don't know if it'll increase, um, property values or such, but it certainly would make it a more attractive place to live. If you can have the option, the modal choice to walk or take your bike, I don't have to drive my car, I can leave it at home. Safety risks, if you don't have Complete Streets, what happens? It's a risk to pedestrians, cyclists, transit passengers. Over a hundred pedestrians are killed each year in New Jersey. New Jersey is actually, um, identified by the Federal Highway Administration as a pedestrian-focused state because the pedestrian strike rate is higher in New Jersey, the average pedestrian strike rate is higher in New Jersey than is in the rest of the country. So we are, we are being watched heavily by the federal government to make sure that we are doing as much as we can in New Jersey to increase pedestrian safety. Cost of fuel, cost of travel, congestion, I think that goes without saying, we've all seen it, we've all seen it at the schools. I also, when I look, um, on the, the Facebook page, there's a lot of talk about parking and trying to get to schools, um, in the morning. If there was a way for parents to walk their children to school, or to help them ride their bicycles to school in a safe way, that would reduce congestion and parking demand at schools. And of course, the local businesses, as Scotch Plains moves forward and looks at ways to revitalize the downtown, when you revitalize downtown, you're inviting more people to come downtown. You're inviting more congestion that already exists. And by providing an alternate way to safely get to town, you can increase the traffic, you can increase foot traffic, increase bike traffic. For one car, you could probably fit twelve bicycles. So, you know, these are things that you want to think of as you're talking about economic development in Scotch Plains. And as I said, the time is ripe for Complete Streets. This movement, it is really taking New Jersey by storm. There, the number of policies in the past year has doubled, um, with high gas prices, obesity, sustainability concerns, traffic growth. We can't build our way out of congestion, you can't build more roads. The more roads you build, the more traffic you're going to get people, you know, you build it, they will come. So we need to think of other ways to move people. There's a greater, greater interest in walking and biking. If you look at the, if you look at, um, and I'm going to speak about marathons and road races, we have them here in Scotch Plains, um, more people are looking to become physically active and they want a place to work out that's not the treadmill, they want a place to ride their bike. And these are very, very low-cost improvements. My organization also does, uh, data analysis, and last year, um, I wanted to take a look at bicycle crashes, because I feel that if you look at fatalities, it's not enough. If a road has ten crashes and one fate, or, you know, and a road has one fatality, you know, maybe that road that has ten crashes needs to be looked at. So we looked at, um, bicycle crashes, uh, over a three-year period from 2009 to 2011, and what I'm showing you here is as close as I could get, giving you a general idea over the past three years where these bicycle crashes have been happening in the general area. And it's Martine South, um, I think there was Westfield, Terrell. Some of them were county roads and some of them were municipal roads. But this is where you're, these are where your reported, reported by crashes are occurring between vehicles and, and bicycles. So this is not just a bicyclist falling over or bicyclist hitting another cyclist, this is vehicle cyclist, um, strikes, those that have been reported. So what is a Complete Streets policy? What am I, what am I asking Scotch Plains to consider here today? What I'm asking you to consider is changing, um, for the good and for the better, the way Scotch Plains looks at transportation. And a Complete Streets policy is a guide to do that. It's a process for planning, designing, building, operating, maintaining streets for all users. It's an incremental change, and it is incorporated into what you already do. So when you look to make an improvement on a roadway, you're not only going to look to make that improvement for vehicles, but is there a way to accommodate cyclists? Is there a way to accommodate pedestrians? Is it appropriate to, to look at these things? It's context-sensitive. Maybe it's a tertiary road and it doesn't need improvements, but, you know, maybe, maybe it's a highly traveled roadway, maybe it's near a school, it's near the library, um, it's a very, very wide road, and you're going to repave it. Is there a way to put down paint that will make it more accommodating for all users? Is there crosswalks? Are there frequent crosswalks? You know, if, if a pedestrian, does a pedestrian have to walk a quarter mile up to get to the crosswalk to cross as a, and then have to walk the quarter mile back? So these are, these are ways of thinking when you're looking at your transportation planning in Scotch Plains. In the Complete Streets policy, you have the purpose and intent, definition of users and modes, types of improvements, design standards, exemptions, and an implementation plan. I drafted a, a policy that I thought you might want to look at to see what possibly could be done in Scotch Plains. Did you, do you?
I, I have, Jerry, did I give them to you? Or they're here? Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is there any fee to your, from your company? Is there any cost to the township if we were to move forward and you were to assist us in this effort?
Absolutely not.
Oh, yeah.
Not even after the first year?
No, not even after the first year.
And then here's the other one.
Can I say something? I think it's a good, very good presentation. I think your suggestions, your ideas are very worthwhile ideas. The question, the big question that I would have, as a town governing body, um, how do we implement some of these ideas or suggestions, crosswalks? Where does the money come from? And for what types of projects?
Sure, no, no problem. So, um, as Councilwoman Giannella was saying, um, there are a number of, of grant opportunities to implement some of these changes. I worked very closely with the Department of Transportation, um, as, you know, and how to promote Complete Streets, because this is a vision that the state has. And the state only controls about 5% of the roadways. Municipalities, you know, this is where the movement is going to take shape. Because municipalities have about, I think in New, in New Jersey, over 90% of the roads in New Jersey are municipally controlled, um, then county and then state has very little. So this is really where the meat and potatoes are of Complete Streets. So we, you know, looking for a way to, to have municipalities move this direction, because you also don't want to be going through one municipality that has a great moving street. These are, there are 565, I think, at this point, so you can be riding your bike for a mile, then hit another town, hit another town. So you want consistency and continuity. The Department of Transportation, um, gives an extra point in grant applications to municipalities that have passed Complete Streets policies. So when you're looking for, um, you want to repave, um, part of the Raritan that's controlled by, you know... you know, you can say, you know, when we're doing this, we would like to consider putting bike lanes in, or maybe sidewalks, which are right-of-way issue. And you, you have a complete streets policy, that's one extra point in your application. The governor just announced today, actually, that the recipients for this recent go-around for municipal aid, and I think it was roughly 65 municipalities at the time of the solicitation had passed policies, two of them did not apply for a grant in that round. 56, roughly 56 of those grant applications that had a complete streets policy, they were, they were provided with a grant. So it's a competitive, there's very little pockets of money in the state, and it's a very competitive grant application process. When you have passed a complete streets policy, that's an extra point. That makes sense?
So there are grants available?
There are grants available, and this governing body, I'm sure, has applied for, so hopefully, some of those at some point. And if not, I'd be, I'd be more than happy
That would be great.
... to either, you know, individually meet with you and talk about the different grant application. You know, there's, there's, there are solicitations every year for these types of projects. And also Sustainable New Jersey, points for Sustainable New Jersey, complete streets policy implementation, that goes to that as well.
Thank you. I would just point out one other thing, and I think it was, you know, raised in your presentation. Some of the streets where you're seeing some of these ongoing problems, the most prominent areas that you're referring to, I think you're talking about county roads,
Right.
Right? I mean, north and south, and even Martine.
Some of them, yes, some of them are county.
So it might behoove this movement, you know, your, your group to inform the county of these issues, because that's really where you're seeing a lot of these problems.
Right, and we do work with the county, and I've been, I've been in contact with Liza Betts from Union County, as well as Sharon Roundtree and Freeholder Estrada. We were looking to try to find a way to implement a complete streets policy, or prepare a complete streets policy for Union County that works. But, you know, the, there's a lot of municipal control in a lot of this, and the more municipalities that pass the policies, Union County is going to have to pass the policy. But, you know, you can work with the county, and what I had written into your policy, which you'll see on the second page, was that Scotch Plains would work in conjunction with Union County to make sure that when the county does come in, to Scotch Plains to do work on a county road, that complete streets and the efforts that Scotch Plains is making to make their streets safer for all users is considered when they want to do, because you have to sign off on it.
Right.
Right. So you're going to say, I'm not going to sign off on this, you know, this is the policy that we promote here, this is what we want to see in our municipality, you need to come back with this that works. And the other thing that I want to add is that Fanwood passed a policy a month or two ago, and I also wrote that into the policy as well, because of the geographic nature of this area, that we want continuity. So you don't want to be coming, I'm from, I'm on the south side, I don't want to have a great, great, you know, if I'm on the sidewalk, or if I'm on a bike lane, whatever it may be, it stops when I hit, you know, so everyone to work together to do this. Westfield passed a policy, Cranford passed a policy. Wouldn't it be great if we had, you know, these interconnected roadways, reducing congestion? I mean, you know, that's something that I'm, you know, to go from one side of town to another, it's 20 minutes. You know, I would like to eventually, and, you know, that's, and as I'm, you know, I've lived here for several years, and I've watched it grow, and I think that this is the next step into making, you know, Scotch Plains in this area a great destination, a great family destination.
Thank you.
Could I just ask a couple of questions? You mentioned these grants, are these 100% funded grants, or are these matching fund grants, or?
There are several different grants. There are, I mean, there's a lot of different grant programs, depending upon what suits Scotch Plains needs, the type of project, and I'd be happy to get you a list of the grants, the, and all the specifics for each of those grants.
Just out of curiosity, Jerry, Mr. James, are we applying for grants like that, or this, like these Department of Transportation grants, do we?
She referenced the grants that were announced today.
Right.
I believe you just referenced.
And then there's also a solicitation going on right now.
The grants that were announced today, yes, we did apply for it, and we did receive over $200,000 for a project. If a project is not attached to, yes, the grants for perfect, we did watch.
Westfield Road, in my mind, would be a perfect road for something like this. If you really think about the width of the road, you know, just to frame it out for you, I do walk a lot in town. I walk on the sidewalk a lot, because I have Alessandra with me. Once you get into our downtown, these sidewalks here are fabulous, but if you walk here, you literally can't, you can't, and she's on her scooter, she, you can't be on these sidewalks. I mean, they're impassable, some of them. And the same thing here, when you go up Front Street, and if you really start to think about what that means, I mean, it becomes problematic. You know, you talked about having a well-lit, well-lit access to public transportation. You know, one of the things in the area that I live in, that I hear a lot from residents who live over by where I'm at, that there is, over by the Quick Check, the one on North Avenue, it's very poorly lit, and it was something that Jerry and Eleanor had worked together on, as far as, you know, which side of the bridge, whatever, needed the lighting. But there were people who were coming over from South Avenue at night, coming back from the bus stop, and it was, walking over that bridge was almost completely dark. I mean, those are, these are things that we could incorporate into the policy. For us, when we talk about policy decisions, and I really thought this would be a great conversation to have, as we started with a new committee looking at the downtown, that this is another element that should absolutely be part of any downtown development conversations that we have. We do have, I mean, when I think of Front Street, it's a very wide street with a lot of potential, and it's really being very poorly utilized at this particular time, so...
And also, too, when you're talking about wide streets, the wider the road, the faster you're going to go. And that's just intentional or not intentional. When you narrow the roadway, you're going to go slower. And bike lanes narrow roadway, striping narrows the roadway, even streetscapes narrows the roadway, it narrows the vision, it's going to make you go slower. And I, you know, I'm asking you, like, when you're out driving, take notice. You know, the, the, the speed limit might be 25, and you feel like you're going 25, but you look down and you're going 35, 40 miles an hour, maybe because the road, the lane is so wide that you, you know, you feel like you can go faster. So, you know, that's, that's, that's another tool to reduce the speed, which is some of the concerns that I've heard expressed today.
Or if you've ever tried, I mean, the Martine Extension, I believe, is county road on that particular stretch, but if you've ever tried to ride your bike or walk to Clark, you can't when you hit that Martine Extension, and you know that route very well. So...
And I, I think, Mayor, you had requested input from the residents to wait, you know, to improve economic development downtown, more family activities downtown. And I have a ton that we can discuss at some point, and I can also present them.
We'll have coffee.
You can, you can shut down part, you know, there's, there's something called cyclovia's, which were started, were started, actually not in this country, but where you shut down roadways and you encourage residents to come out and ride their bicycles. And they can come downtown. And you have the YMCA, the JCC, there's a, I don't think, a Zumba business here, Joint Motion, and they, and you promote healthy ways of living and active lifestyles. And you can talk about complete streets and talk about the vision that Scotch Plains have, and use that opportunity. You know, you can start out once, maybe, you know, it's great, and you want to do it twice a year. I mean, there's, there's so many things that can be done to, to improve, you know.
In spite of some of the chuckles from some of the folks on the council, we'll get together. I'm sure you have some great ideas that, you know, and I think your presentation was excellent tonight.
And I think that, you know...
It was very helpful. It opens up, you know, possibility, and it makes us think.
And I mean, I'm, I'm nonpartisan, and then I know, you know, I was just listening to things
We are too.
... that, that were going up, but, you know, roads, safety, and complete streets, you know, this is something that, to me, you know, crosses all political.
Couldn't agree to you more.
So I just wanted to also let you know that Jana is the one who wore the Scotch Plains Fire Department patch recently, in the run that I discussed at the last council meeting. So she represented our Scotch Plains Fire Department in the one run for Boston, which I thought was very, and I appreciate that, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Trichek, very nice. Very, very nice.
And I learned from her husband that you can make maple syrup in Scotch Plains.
Yes, that's another...
Okay, guys.
It's an untapped economic resource in Scotch Plains.
Let's, let's, let's end, you know, there.
Thank you so much, Jana.
Thank you for coming by, Jerry.
Thank you so, so much, thank you.
Excellent, really good.
And you have my card, if you have any questions, I know I threw a lot of information, and there's a lot more, I mean, I only went through half of my slides, but I'd be more than happy to talk about it, and I gave you the draft, you can put it, and there's also, you know, legal concerns.
Our manager's an avid runner, and I'm sure he would love to be part of this conversation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, for coming by. All right. Can we have a review of actions for our business meeting on the 20th, Jerry or Bonnie? Can we just go through those real quickly?
I'll use my mouse.
Bonnie, do you have it in front of you?
I do.
Do you want to go through it quickly?
We'll have a proclamation for Relay for Life, it's the public hearing and final adoption of the cap bank ordinance, public hearing and final adoption of the 2014 municipal budget, public hearing and final adoption of the bond ordinance for capital improvements, the April 1st and April 17th council minutes, the resolution authorizing a correction to sewer billings for 2014. This allows for minor adjustments for the tax department to be able to make, certifying self-examination of the 2014 budget. For 2014, the township is under self-exam, so this resolution has to follow the final adoption of the budget. Authorizing the release of a performance guarantee posted by Angela Resianato for Block 1801, Lot 501, Lots 5, 6, and 7. Resolution authorizing the award of contract for the purchase of a replacement vacuum body from vacuum sales of Lindenwold, that project was bid out and opened two weeks ago for an amount not to exceed $59,800. Resolution awarding the project known as Westfield Avenue, Section 2 milling and top course paving, that also was bid out and will be awarded to Z Brothers Concrete Contractors in the amount of $237,677.74. Authorizing the submission of the 2013 recycling tonnage grant with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And lastly, resolution authorizing an award of contract for the purchase of automotive parts and accessories, and that will be under a New Jersey State contract or Somerset Co-op in an amount not to exceed $26,500. And then other new business will be the Billist and the introduction of the ordinance for speed reductions on Jerusalem Road, and a second for speed reductions on Raritan Road has been added.
Thank you, Bonnie. Well, that concludes our meeting, so...
We have no further questions. Counsel comment?
Certainly. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay, just a couple of things. I just, in light of the fact that we will be recognizing the students who coordinate Relay for Life after the fact, I just do want to remind the community that the Scotch Plains Fanwood School students will be hosting the annual Relay for Life on the weekend of the 16th going into the 17th of May. Obviously, this is a tremendous event. If you've never participated in Relay for Life, it's an overnight event, you do not have to stay overnight, but it's a wonderful community event, it has a great feel, the students have worked very hard on it. The mayor gave me the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony recently, it was an honor to be there, and I would encourage many of the residents to participate. I also just wanted to go back to, you know, really the issue before, and stress the fact that we do need a very specific policy that helps to give direction to the many volunteers that work tirelessly to assist this township. And then just as a third point, really express my disappointment that that was put forward as a slate of candidates, that is something that is uncharacteristic, it has not been done before, it's atypical to the business of this particular governing body, and I think it was very unfortunate, because there's, there are members of that slate that I would have really liked to support, because I think they have the potential to add a great deal of value. And there are other members who I think, while they have opportunity to add value, may have done so in the past, or should do so in the towns with they, in which they reside.
Thank you. We have, um, yes, thank you. Jerry, Mr. James, I was wondering, I see you're here, we'll be approving the Westfield Avenue, Section 2 paving project, is there any timeframe for when that may actually
Mr. Timko is on vacation for the next two weeks. Once he gets back, we'll get the contractor going and get rolling.
Okay, fair enough. And I'd like to also say that, you know, obviously, we're well into our sizable road program already, that I see is progressing very quickly, and obviously, we've had a big rain recently, and there's been some rescheduling that had to happen. I really want to compliment our police department on the notification of the community. I understand it's frustrating for people, particularly areas around Highlander Drive and such, which are close to the school. And I want to reiterate, in case people aren't aware, that we have a notification system in place that allows for email and text message updates, and the police department's been making great use of that. I've gotten, you know, changes to the road paving, texted to me at 10:00 p.m. at night or 7:00 a.m. in the morning. I want to encourage people, go to the town website, click on the Police Department link page. At the top of the Police Department page, there's a link that says "New Community Notification System." You click on that, you go ahead and sign up, you put in your cell phone number, your email, you'll get a lot of good information and be on top of things like this. So again, thanks to the Police Department, and looking forward to all those roads being done real soon.
To that point, real quick, we did have, obviously, the rain that one day really did throw us off, but additionally, we had some notifications from some of the utility companies, that they need to do some work, and coincidentally, it was, or not, they were, some of the roads were working on, so that, well, one or two of the roads behind schedule, based on the gas company and the oil company.
If I would like to, to speak to a previous item as well, just for clarification, both from, from the manager and from the township attorney. Because I do, I do agree with Councilwoman Janela that there needs to be some clarification with regards to some of our committees. As it relates to a committee that is advising and proposing for functions of day-to-day operation, is it, without it being clearly stated, is it not your opinion or your understanding that that would still go through the manager's office, regardless of what they might or might not be proposing, if it is related to day-to-day activity? And if it is related to larger items, such as the presentation we just saw, which I think was highly informative and highly appropriate for a conference meeting, that is more of a larger policy perspective, that that indeed would come to the council directly? Is that in other townships that you serve, Mr. Lair, and in other townships that you have served, Mr. James, is that your experience with some of these ad hoc committees?
I would say, generally, what you said is probably, is consistent with the Faulkner Act, which obviously I've served under, under the last seven years. I admittedly haven't seen a lot of ad hoc committees until I came here, so it's a bit unique in this form of government, for the reasons you spelled out with day-to-day operations. That doesn't mean I'm adverse to everybody's opinion, I absolutely welcome anybody's opinion. But I think, from the Faulkner Act perspective, you generally spelled it out right.
I just, and I... I think those are reasonable points.
I'm sorry, could I get, ask the question of the attorney? Thank you.
My experience with ad hoc committees is that, many times, resolutions that are being done are not done with direction to the ad hoc committee that's clear enough, and that the resolution that was before you with respect to this particular downtown clearly was a policy issue. It, you, you, there was a clear requirement, there was a purpose identified, there was a reporting requirement, it was the fact that no budget, no monies can be spent until approved by the governing body, but it was purely a policy-driven body that has to come back, purely a government function of the council. If you have drafted your resolution in a way that... If, if you have drafted your resolution in a way that deals with day-to-day issues, which I find that most ad hoc committee resolutions are too ambiguous and they need to be much more clear about the direction and who they take direction from. But if it's day-to-day, you're, you're infringing upon the powers of the manager who, under this form of government, clearly has the day-to-day functions.
So, I just.
Thank you.
To say that, that is what I'm asking for. I'm asking for clarification because while serving under the, on the council, you may have a very crystal-clear understanding of our form of government. I guarantee you that if we circulated a poll throughout Scotch Plains, the majority of Scotch Plains would not understand the power that lies within the township manager. And even the people that serve on these volunteer committees would not understand that their role is purely advisory. And what I'm suggesting is that people really give a lot of time, and in some cases, it actually costs money to serve on these committees because they can't go to work some, some of the hours that they would like or overtime, or, I mean, people take these commitments seriously. All I'm asking is that when these committees begin, all of them, every single one, somebody sits down with them and says, "Listen, these are the parameters, this is your chairperson, the protocol will be that the chairperson asks for a meeting with the manager, invites a manager, whatever it may be." This way, it doesn't lend itself to, you know, the committee makes suggestions that they're assuming would move forward naturally, and then that doesn't take place. I think it clarifies a lot that way and it avoids a lot of hurt feelings later on.
Okay. Any other comments?
I want to say goodnight to Cousin Bill up in Livingston. I hope you enjoyed the podcast.
On that note.
And I hope, I hope, I hope to see you tomorrow at the softball game.
There you go.
Up at the Varsity Field. Come out and see the girls' varsity softball team. Certain person that lives in my home plays on that team.
Oh.
So, I would like to see.
A little self-promotion there.
I would like to see some of you come out and support the Raiders tomorrow, 4:00 PM against Rose Hill Park and watch my daughter play.
Two cheers. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.